Alrighty, it is now ten o'clock. We will open our morning workshop and as always, we will start with a interrupting empty folder. Um, we will start with the update, public works update from director Jeff Hunter and county engineer Susska Rol.
Okay, we have one thing on your consent agenda today, and that is a resolution to temporarily closed east road so we can replace a cattle pass there. Um, and that's that. The closure will take effect um, this week through the twenty second of September. Uh, payment, and then we have a couple of payments. First one is the first and final for slope, platining and guardrail project. The amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars to Frank Gurney and company, and that's a federally funded project. And then the approval and pay estimate for Courtney or the pay estimate for Courtney Road, the amount of five hundred thousand, seven dollars. Yeah, that's all I have.
On construction, Rock Creek Old Date Bridge Painter was completed last week. Uh, white plastic edge lines were waiting a start date from the contractor. Her warning signs and guide posts, contracting bonds were sent back to the contractor this week, so we'll get started on that one as well. And staff continues to collect those annual traffic counts. On the design end, Bickleton area paving project, construction funding documents are washed out, awaiting approval to go to add. Plans and specs are in review. Sunday Old Highway Eight right away negotiations continue. So far, it's been well accepted over there. Uh, bridge repair bundles waiting for preliminary design funds to be approved. A small works contract for guardrail on Canyon and Dot Road is currently on add. Bids will be due September thirteenth. And preliminary work continues on our other list of projects coming up for next year's construction program.
Okay, to the maintenance side, uh, West Market Street will be B S T scheduled to be done this week. And West Side crews are still working on Bickleton Highway reconstruction. For the facilities work, uh, civil work, all the sidewalks and ramps have been poured, asphalt patching is next week, and then that will be complete. All HVAC work has been completed. Uh, Pioneer Center still same schedule, jail roof started, they actually held back last week because the threat of rain and other things, so they are starting today. Uh, events, they're same, nothing scheduled until the adult for H Horse Camp. And, uh, radio site, uh, say it is passed, uh, everything has been complete to commission, except for the grounding, and it is scheduled for October. Um, other follow-up issues, uh, we should probably talk about scheduling a six-year, six-year hearings. Um, we were thinking, uh, let's see, sure what we're thinking? Let me pull up the calendar. You know? If you wanted to do Tuesdays again, since you're here, we could do one at one thirty and one at six, do the Zoom unless you want to go to Pioneer Center. I'll leave that up to the board.
Um, comments before I look at the calendar? What was the date again?
I have not picked the date yet. Um, I figured sometime in September, we just have, we have to hammer down a date so we can, we'll bring a an advertisement, we have to advertise for two weeks in the paper, so. So the earliest we could have it would be hmm, so if we, we, we go out that week, so earliest we could have would be the twenty-sixth of September.
Laurie's got a Dallas part water district meeting that night, it shows on the calendar.
Following Tuesday, October third doesn't have anybody having anything on my calendar.
The third looks good.
October. Yeah, if we could have another week, that'd be good. I wasn't planning on being here on the third.
Okay. Let's see, I'll do say so. Um, oh crap.
We've got the Water Conservancy Board at seven o'clock.
I have, uh, my nonprofit meeting that night too.
How about the seventeenth October?
That works for me.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yep.
Okay, seventeenth it is.
I would, uh, maybe I'll just make them over here.
And so you want both of them that day?
Yep.
One in the, uh, one thirty and the other one at six, six thirty?
Six is good. We can do Zoom, Zoom and Carson.
Okay, we will.
I haven't heard, uh, anybody asking for us to do meetings on the west side in quite a long time since we have Zoom option.
Right, I am either. I know, uh, Trout Lake Council, because I was supposed to meet with them today, but they don't, they're actually doing them in person now. And I'm like, yeah, okay, I'm not driving all the way over there tonight.
And if either staff has a laptop in front of them, can you put it on the calendar now so we don't forget? I put me a little note, but I'll remove my note eventually. Um, let's talk sidewalks.
Okay.
What, what is the plan out here? Is it to literally sidewalk through the middle of the asphalt? Just the little end pieces that you do?
That's all we're.
And then what are you going to do, asphalt back up to the concrete?
Yep. Yeah, that was the choice the board made. We had a couple of different.
Well, I just saw paint and like striping in there, I'm like, my bumper's overhanging, should I back up or?
Yeah, we haven't had too many difficulties with that, but that's kind of what was decided, so that's what we move forward on.
If the city's not complaining, I'm not complaining.
All they cared about was getting annex one.
I was gonna say technically, they didn't have a lot to complain about this sidewalk when you look at the sidewalk.
Exactly.
Um, any, uh, that's gonna be like the shortest public works update.
Oh, it was quick. Well, we just saw, we spent all day Thursday with.
Seth's never had to run over here and breathe hard, so next week, can you like make him do laps around the building or something? Because you and Gordy used to come in and be like, and I kind of missed that. You don't, I'm sure.
I know, I'm not that, yeah, I don't miss that too much either. Today would have been one of those days.
I, I have nothing else. You guys are doing a good job.
Okay.
No, good. No, no, okay, no.
Thank you very much. I'll give Rob the rest of my time.
Um, do you want to come forward, sir, and your guests? That I've already kind of seen once, but.
Morning Commissioners. I just want to take a few minutes to introduce Jesselyn Berry. She's a high school senior, Goldendale High School, and she's going to be working with us in the H R department for the, this quarter, I guess, or semester.
Yeah, next couple of months.
And on his work site learning program, as you may remember, we had Rachel Gallagher. And so, uh, now Jess is going to join us and learn all about government, so we'll be bringing her to some of these meetings and our department updates. She'll be, uh,
Very cool.
Spending.
We, if we want to teach her about government, we should have her take my chair at one o'clock.
That is not.
We want her to stay.
We don't want her to run away crying.
Learning experience.
Anyway, welcome, and I hope you, uh, learn everything you need. And, um, hopefully Rob walks you around, shares you with people, and so you can get an aspect of all forms and all departments.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and welcome. You won't find a better mentor than that man.
Thank you.
Um, um, we're way early, we can deal with some board pending. I have a couple of budget things I kind of wanted to bring to you guys, it's not to get an answer from you, but to at least float some things I've been thinking, um, with the budget, and then we can discuss them on Thursday to see where you feel you need to be. Um, I know we removed the grant writer from the sheriff's budget. Uh, but the more I kind of look at that is they're only going to pay the grant writer to actually apply for a grant, so technically to me, it's almost like a win-win situation. Uh, they either apply for grants or they don't. If they don't, they're not using the money. If they do, they're going to save us way more than five thousand dollars. So to me, it's almost a risk worth taking. Uh, even though I was kind of the start of that conversation, I understand. Um, so anyway, reconsider that one for Thursday, and then the other one I want to, uh, potentially reconsider for Thursday is a new item. And it would be putting a thousand dollars into the code compliance budget for small tools, office supplies, essentially to buy a drone. Uh, this is my idea. I think George has brought up a drone before, wanting economic per emergency management's ten thousand dollar drone. So the issue we have is he can't always um, visually get evidence of the offense. So like, we'll talk about our septic system up here, he can't go on the property, but from the road, he can see the lid is off the tank. Well, they can't prosecute because the lid is off the tank. You actually got to see overflow. Well, we can't see overflow because it can't get on the property. So if he had a drone, he could fly over, take pictures. The pictures are now admissible as evidence, and we can actually follow through with some code compliance because and, and I'm sure we can ask him, but he's, he's given us testimony that he's had to walk around properties and look from other views because he can't get on that property. Um, so I think it would be a cheap drone, would be a cheap fix to give him visual uh, and maintain safety and be able to build the cases that he needs to go to. So just a thought out there, think about it, we'll discuss it on.
What are you about your privacy concerns?
My privacy?
You don't have any privacy concerns?
Line of drones totally legal. Long as you're looking through windows.
I don't know if it is. Do you kind of own your airspace too? No, you don't?
F A owns all airspace.
Yep.
Okay.
But there's, there's legal privacy concerns, and then there's actual what you feel a privacy concern from constituents. Because if that was the case, you know, the sheriff's office would have drones that they use to gather evidence on a regular basis. Um, the only time they use drones is in, um, hostage situations or like the situation out here. You know, that guy barricaded himself in.
Right, I guess, I guess I'm looking at it to be used and not for, you know, the guy's got three bags of trash. Uh, but public health concerns where we have complaints of overflowing septic running down to the, close to the neighbor's property kind of thing. But we can't visualize it to do anything about it because we can't get on the property. Um, this is a public health concern and not, you know, you have three Hulk vehicles or something. So technically, if we were concerned about when it was being used, um, we could always set a policy um, that stipulates when it is allowed to to alleviate some.
Before I could put it in the budget, I would have to see the policy.
I know there's been, well, another agency that, um, was going to do the same thing for wetland and for invasive species issues, and they face problems. But we're going to do a drone program. So I don't know whatever happened with that, if they're allowed to go forward or not, but I hadn't heard anything about. Yes, that's me.
Yeah.
It was me.
Um, okay.
So just, yeah, just check.
So I mean, it's a thousand bucks, uh, whether it's in the budget or added in later, if we so choose to do so, that's fine with me too. I just, um, maybe we keep that on our radar. Uh, submit a legal request to see what the prosecutor's opinion of such a thing is. Um, and then as we clear off other things off our plate, bring in more discussion to figure out.
Thousand dollars, it can always be a supplemental, but.
That's kind of what I'm looking at here, but.
I would, um,
I just know that that case over there was dropped for that reason. So, and we've been battling that one now for two years, and it's gone nowhere. And it's gone nowhere. I'm leaning closer to the mic. Sorry to everybody on Zoom land. I lean back so my seatmates can see each other when we're talking and, and they get away from the mic. Um, all right, future discussion. Um, and that's all I had regarding the budget stuff I wanted to float with you. Um, are you economic development ready for us? All right, come on up, grab a third chair if you need a third chair.
Good morning. Um, okay, I'll start off with the work we're doing, uh, with McEd, um, McEd and M C A, um, they were awarded the I cap program. And Econ Northwest is in the draft portion of their innovation hub report, and once we get that, we'll send it on to you guys. Um, we are currently on McEd's board team for the E P A grant. Um, working with Brownfield Assistant Work. This grant is a million dollars divided, um, from McEd's five county region, so the three counties in Oregon and two in Washington. Um, and this is ongoing, and we expect to get an application in October from McEd. Um, the A D O Grant Writer position, we're still in a wait, um, and C phase, and we haven't heard any new news on that position. Um, work fillers, uh, development, we have a board retreat up in Yakima for the South Central Workforce Development Council. Um, both of us intend to attend that. City engagement, we are still working with the city of Vingen in regards to their economic development plan. They are pursuing through curb. Additionally, they are beginning their work that the county had approved from the point oh nine dollars, which includes the waterline extension project. Um, and we'll, um, potentially be assisting them with the middle housing planning grant that came through Commerce just recently. Uh, in Golden, though, the city manager has asked us to participate on the, uh, advisory board and assist in setting up a process for their incubator space. And I'll be, um, participating in that capacity. White Salmon, we are continuing to work with them on their housing issues. Broadband, um, right now, we're just attending the monthly Commerce and W S B O, um, update meetings and working with local I S Ps to formulate a deployment plan once funding becomes available. Housing, we're still working on this piece and what it's going to look like moving forward in regards to the document filing fees and sales tax and use or sales and use tax, sorry. Um, and we have been in communication with both Mid Columbia Housing and Law Gap in this regard. Um, recently, I attended the, um, Wida Conference up in Walla Walla. Um, it was really informational, and they had really good breakout sessions, so that was exciting to see what was going on. Um, and then I was also able to attend the Northwest Basic Economic Development Course in Lacey. That's four days of training on economic development one-on-one basically, and that was very, um, insightful. Um, upcoming, we have an, uh, I A C C conference, which is in October, um, up in Wenatchee.
What's that stand for?
Um, Infrastructure Assistant Coordinating Council. House call.
It's a new one.
Yeah.
That all those.
And that's it?
Yep.
For me.
Where, where does it? When is this workforce conference?
The, the one in.
Boarded, yeah, September fourteenth. So our, our plan moving forward is over the next year, I'll continue to attend some of these meetings with, uh, with the South Central Workforce Development Council, just because I've already been on there seven or eight years, but at some point over the next year, as, as I bring her up there with me, she'll get uh, more knowledgeable with all of their programs and the people working in them. The idea is to have it shipped over to Chelsea in the long term.
And, uh, this isn't something that a board of directors, this is you guys going, not, because I don't remember getting an invite for that one.
Yes, this, this would be us.
Just you guys, not, we have our other, yeah.
Yeah.
Just making sure I didn't screw up and miss something on my own.
I believe we have the executive board, which is the county commissioners for each region, then, then we have the full board, which is.
I don't even know that they do a retreat for us. We just signed bills.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we've got lodging tax with Lynn real quick. She's going to provide a, a quick little, uh, thirty, sixty, ninety for us on what's coming up and, and some of the stuff we're trying to do.
Hi. Um, just an F Y I, um, reminder. Um, the lodging tax advisory committee is comprised of seven people. Um, one would be Laurie, who is our current director, chairperson. And then we have three users and three generators, and as we stand right now, um, we have a new person that came on as the executive director at Maryhill Museum. I've reached out to her already and, and sent her a copy of the application form. Um, we are missing, uh, we're, we're missing a generator, and Chelsea and I have both been pretty active with trying to recruit somebody from the west side. Um, as far as, um, somebody from, um, like Trout Lake.
Have you tried to Elc Meadows RV Park owners?
I'll make a note of that. That's great information.
And you, you, uh, is Lisa Evans still on there?
On there.
So she's from the west side.
And.
Where are your other users from? Or generators?
Uh, we've got Marie Guncl from our, the Peach Beach down here.
So you're missing a District Three one, is what you're missing then. Actually, Guncl.
Guncl is District Three.
So we're missing two. I know, we're, we're.
There are also new owners at Lyle Hotel. That might be a source, and they built a wonderful restaurant there now that I don't know if they've opened again.
All right. Um, we also have a little bit of a snag going on with, um, Goldendale Chamber. Um, Nicole changed positions, and now she's on the board, um, on their financial board of directors, so to speak. Um, she's a board member over there, so she's no longer the executive director. Mindy, who had stepped up to the plate, Mindy Jackson, who stepped up to the plate to be heard, um, bought a house, I believe in Twin Falls, Idaho, and she's leaving us, which is sad. Um, I did talk to Tia this morning, her last name, I believe, is French. She is the, um, interim director over there. She's been the acting director all summer, while Minnie's been busy with personal things. They will not decide who is going to be the executive director until probably most likely sometime at the end of the year. So I'm looking at having her step in as, as that part of that, that faction. Um, and the other thing that has come up when, and Commissioner Zoller and I have had a conversation in the past, one of the difficulties we have with this logic tax advisory committee is that it's such short term. Um, the term, the, the, the committee members' terms expire on May thirty-first. And by the time we get everything juggled back around so that we can be ready to get public notices out in a timely manner at the end of the year, so that we can be meeting at the very first of January to give this money distributed to the people appropriately. Um, we run out of time. So one of the things that she had suggested is that possibly we change these terms from one year to three years. I'm not sure exactly how, you know, what, what the process is to do that. That we put a resolution before your board to request that we can do that. Um, whether you folks need to discuss it and vote on it and decide because we, we end up just scrambling constantly because we have no board, we have no lodging tax advisory committee right now. Everybody's term expired on May thirty-first. So that's kind of the dilemma that I have right now.
Why, why do we, go ahead.
Do we know why it was set up for one year at the beginning? Was that a statutory requirement?
I really don't know. I could go do some serious research on that.
I, let's look into that because one year terms doesn't seem normal most times.
And one doesn't, but three kind of seems long to me. I'm happier with two, but my biggest question is why did they pick that date instead of January first? I mean, it seems like it's being broke up right in the middle of your planning phase. Uh, but if you did it on January first, you could just renew people in December. They're sitting in through the whole deal you're doing, so I would encourage you to look at changing the date of appointment.
Yeah, we can do that in the resolution too.
January first might be a little bit difficult from the standpoint that we typically start advertising. You know, we, we, we will have a meeting generally around the first part, middle part of November um, to discuss how we're going to write the new application form.
Then I would do it, make your appointments in August. Uh, that way, my point is whoever's appointed seats that whole thing without you having to worry about a reappointment.
Exactly.
Pick your month accordingly.
Yeah.
Um.
That works. Okay.
You know, that way you don't have to worry about reappointment in the middle of one of your.
Have you got that up, Jake?
Session.
Are you looking at what the requirements are?
No, I can't find it that fast.
Okay.
No, I don't know that you'll ever find why the, I mean, this is a ten-year-old deal. I don't know you'll ever, unless you called Solder or something. That's probably the only place you're ever going to find the information on why they made it to one year. Uh, but I don't, I don't have a problem with it, you know, check legality wise and make sure it can be longer and then said, I would prefer two, but if you both are at three, we're.
Well, how long, what are our terms for planning commission and, you know, all the others?
Uh, planning is.
At three or four years.
I think planning is six.
Ah, man.
Well, I know that the committees for the lead entity are three for the citizens review and the.
Say, some of our boards are two. I think there's one, maybe two that are three. Most are two and four.
I know it would cut down on a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, one is overkill, but um, what's the turnover rate in those? Do you?
It really hasn't been that much. I mean, I've only been here for years and, um.
It's not a really heavy board with a lot of responsibility.
We've, we've had that opening since I sat here. Because I've given the previous director two different names. Um, and, uh, they were not contacted.
Porta Health is two-year terms.
So anyway, that was what I had to share with you.
I'll, I'll work with you on it.
Civil Service Commission's four years.
Yeah, I'd like said I would prefer two, but I'm not a stickler on it. If you guys are at three, I'm at three. I don't, you know, whatever.
I think two's good with the way businesses change and.
And then just figure out what month works best to.
Yeah, we'll look at the calendar and then we'll.
Get a full year out of them.
Then, then I guess the next step would be to put a resolution before this board regarding that. Sounds great, guys. Thanks. Any other questions for me?
I have, thank you. Yep.
Okay, so for the, uh, the Columbia Board Regional Airport, we did successfully put in a one million dollar loan request. That is the Community Aviation Revitalization Board. They meet September seventh. Uh, so we gave them all the paperwork early August, uh, filled in some gaps working with them. So we should know by the end of the month where we sit with that. Um, in addition to that, the Columbia Board Regional Airport had put in a point oh nine, uh, ask for a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars as, as an emergency backstop to service that loan for, for no more than three years, so sixty-one thousand dollars approximately per year. Uh, this was approved by the K C Pita Board, Klickatt County Public Economic Development Authority. Uh, so right now, we're just moving through the proper, uh, process, so we'll do a resolution for our next K C P Pita Board, uh, for that, and then we'll do, uh, a resolution for the county commissioners to, uh, to take into consideration for that. Um, one quick question for that is, uh, speaking with our counterparts, Skamania County E D C, I was made aware of a capital budgets expenditure allocation that the state does every year. And I knew that that was out there. I didn't know how applicable it was to airports. Apparently it is applicable to airports. I need to do some more investigation on this. But, uh, I'm asking the county commissioners if it's okay if I, uh, approach our representatives and senators for the fourteenth legislative district. Both Representative Gina Mazbrecker and Chris Corey on, on whether or not they would support that. The timeframe for that would be January is when it's due. So just like all of these allocations, there's a lot of late work that needs to be done and on the, on the front part of that, so that when they go out. Um, it's, we, we, we can apply for it. It is a very quick turnaround, uh, considering government, so to speak. Uh, so we'll know in that regard by March, which is a little bit different than the federal, uh, than the federal request that we had where we had to wait a number, maybe eight months to figure out where we were sitting on that. This one's just a couple of months. Uh, and then we'll find out. That would bring our total shortfall from one point four down to nine hundred thousand if approved for five hundred thousand. If approved for five hundred thousand or uh request, and and I don't see any reason why the Investment Review Committee wouldn't. Wouldn't uh assist us with that with that final nine hundred thousand dollars. So um. In the meantime, in regards to us going back to the US. EDA's Investment Review Committee for that, for the uh workforce training hangar and associated infrastructure down there at the airport. Um, we've been, we've been advised to move to push it back from our October until January to ask for that. Um, and then right now I'm currently working with the new engineer that's been assigned to the project, Brian Alvis, and I'll be working with Jeff Hunter on. Trying to firm up some of that, some of those uh, some of those costs. So they would like to see us. They would like to see this project, the Investment Review Committee would like to see this. Project go through the architectural engineering portion, which with a small contingency would be about a half a million dollars and come to a ninety percent solution. On the costs and everything before we go back to them. Uh, but this is a discussion that I need to have with. Jeff Hunter. So and I made a, I made him aware of this late last week. So um, but this is something I just need to work with them before we start spending any money because the original intent was. We had the, we knew about the budget shortfall due to the cost uh increase in costs of construction and inflation. And so we were supposed to just go right back to the IRC, so there I feel like they're changing the goalposts on us a little bit, but this is kind of the way we're. We're trying to move forward. I just want to make sure that our county commissioners were tracking on where we were with that process. Any questions?
Are you gonna go to the meeting for the loan? Is that open to the public? Can you say that on that?
I I wish I could, but I I've been told I can't. So that is uh, one of those board meetings is, I don't want to say it's down behind closed doors, but. It is. So the public can't really attend.
Open to the people that wants to be open.
Yeah, yeah. And and I can see why it's not because they don't want it to be. Uh, from a public perspective, they want that board to be as independent as possible. Uh, to be able to judge each project because each project's coming in from this like from statewide, so they don't want it to be. Kind of shifted left or right on.
And how much is, there's five million total in the state?
There's five million total in the state. We're asking for twenty percent. But they have indicated to me, uh, David, the project manager, has indicated me that they can give us a letter of commitment. Saying that they will award us the million dollars in twenty twenty five's biennium. So that whatever they get from the state in twenty twenty five, that they will give us the first million out of that because we wouldn't go out to construction. Until about twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. So. So their idea is like they don't want to use it all at the very beginning and tie that money up. Maybe they can use it elsewhere in the state and then. Or or if if we start a little early, they have some funds uh remaining, we we can utilize it. So that's kind of the way we're trying to finagle this.
So we're bringing point oh nine dollars, more point oh nine dollars to the table, and we have the firm commitment from. The city of the Dells that they're gonna bring their half.
Yep, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they're gonna be putting in. So all altogether, we're looking at. Of the five point nine million dollar project, the county is only gonna be putting in. Right now, firm, three hundred and fifty thousand, but as an emergency. Um, up to no more than a hundred and eighty three, a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. Like worst case scenario, and this that hundred and eighty three thousand, sixty one thousand dollars per year would not. Would not be incurred until like twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, maybe twenty twenty eight.
So if we move forward now and start into the final design. What dollars will we be using for that?
So we can use the EDA. We like, so we would use that initial seven hundred thousand dollars from the point oh nine that we're utilizing. We would be using that as a grant match with the two point eight million that we've already been awarded with the US EDA. But once you start.
But will ADA sign the contract until we have all the money procured?
So we've already got the award letter.
We've got the award.
Yeah, we've already got the award letter for the two point, and that's, that's where I need to.
Contract though.
Yeah, and that's where I need to speak with Jeff Hunter on this is is I need to know where these dollars are gonna be coming from. Because we don't want to start that process and we start sucking money in from that two point eight million. And then now we are obligated to finish the project, knowing that we're experiencing a shortfall of one point four million. So that's, that's kind of where.
Will they sign the contract knowing that we're not at over eighty percent funded right now?
The US EDA?
Yes.
Yes, I believe I believe they will, but we already have everything lined up. So over the next six months, I've got my ten documents. I need to, I need to go find somewhere to to in order to move forward with with this project, but that's still. The architectural and engineering takes six to nine months. So that's not something we could just begin like this month, for instance. I still need to firm up some of the requirements for the US EDA, but.
So. We're gonna ask the EDA for even more money, but they want to see the architectural and design and engineer.
I think they don't want us to come back twice. They don't want us to keep coming back. They want a more realistic number. The problem is. Whatever number we come up with right now is not necessarily a number in two years when the thing starts getting built, so. We're still gonna have a shortfall.
So the the numbers we have right now is with an anticipated date of twenty twenty five for construction. So we built in inflation a year ago. With Jeff Hunter, we built in inflation, but right now Brian's going through. I'm just like what you're talking about is I'm worried about. That process is once we start sucking in, sucking down the dollars, so to speak, does that obligate us? In some fashion to finish this project or or make it a smaller scale? I'm not sure where that stands.
I don't see how they will obligate the funds. So usually your fed federal grants, they won't, they will award the funds. But they will not sign the contract until you can show you've got eighty percent of all the funds needed. Because they won't have a project that's half built. Same thing with the bridge, you know?
Okay.
And so, so make sure that's the case. I mean, and so and I understand where they're going, but they want you to use other dollars. Not included in that contract. And so what you need to do is is an agreement by them that since it's been awarded, if we spend point oh nine dollars, our dollars to come up with the engineering. That at that point, then they'll say yes, and we can continue to use the that money. Uh, as match, that they won't say it's not match because they haven't contracted.
Mm hmm, okay.
We need to get that, but I have no problem using the point oh nine dollars to get the engineering and design done. Because no matter what, we build it today, we build it in the future, the engineering design has to get done. But I definitely don't want to take a federal grant that says we have to get it done with they're still holding the bag that can scuttle the whole project.
Okay, I will, I will dive into that. Um. And then last, and then lastly, the Clicktack Mill Site. Um, we did submit an integrated planning grant for that, two hundred thousand dollars. We should know by our next update whether or not we've been approved for that. So be for the community of Clickitat with that Clicktack Mill Site. Between this two hundred thousand dollar integrated planning grant, that's gonna be towards like what the liability issues might be or or the. What the current contamination levels are underneath that concrete pad and everything with the community engagement. If we combine that with the McAdes uh million dollars from the EPA where we might be able to get two hundred thousand dollars of that for this. That's pulling in four hundred thousand dollars to figure out how we can move forward with this site uh in 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 a way that's. Good for the community that the community wants. Um, and so that's. That's where we're at with that, so that's good news. Um, and then lastly, or the the two other things would be commerce. We're looking at. Doing two sessions with the Department of Commerce. Uh, they would like to do a discussion potentially on ChatGPT. And we're looking at maybe partnering up with the Gorge Technology Alliance on the ChatGPTs, that artificial intelligence. Chatbot that you can engage with and what that looks like from a business perspective. Uh, they have somebody that's an expert in that that's willing to come out there. I figured. The Western Clicktack County would would be probably the best spot for that, along with Gorge Technology Alliance, but. Um, we're still trying to go in the planning phases of that. The second portion that would be something in regards to agricultural. So doing like a small, and both of these would be a small one night uh type of things with the with our local chambers of commerce. Where um, if we do agriculture, I'm not, I'm not certain what sector that might be in. Um, but that, you know, we're we we're still kind of looking for partners, whether or not Hannah Brows from WSU would like to partner in on that. We still need to approach her. But anyways, commerce wants to come down and do a couple of nights and and do a couple of speaking gigs, so we're working with them on that. Um, and then we have a new hire, Economic Development Specialist, uh person moving up from Texas. Um, and they're slated to be starting October first, so. We're very excited.
When will you hear from ecology on that two hundred thousand?
I'm hoping by the end of this month.
Okay.
So they they, I believe they've already met. It's just about them getting back to us. So.
Um, with regards to commerce and putting something on their radar to come down and talk about. Um, if we're talking to the ag industry, I think it'd be important that we focus on the wine grape. Industry with what we know, with what is coming for all of our farmers on the east wing of the county. Um, they're gonna need to, if they want to continue in business, they're gonna need to start shipping their grapes anywhere they can find it. And anything that commerce can do to get us into the international market. Or the Midwest or anywhere else, it's gonna be really important.
Um, I don't disagree with that, but I would hate to focus commerce coming down to deal with. Two landowners. I if there's bigger, I mean, we got.
There's more.
Five hundred farmers and ranchers. Um, so I would like to not. Dial in the scope to just one ag product, whether that's grapes or wheat or barley or whatever else. Um, there's a whole lot of people out there that can use the help, so.
And we have a lot more than than two vineyards in the county.
No, but there was.
I'll go all the way from the west to the east.
I don't disagree, but the ones that are taking the hit are the Saint Shels people, which I was told there was only two, so.
I can, I can reach out to commerce and see what kind of services they provide because it it's a lot like. Regardless of of what your. Co- commerce gets people to to do discussions and some of them might have only been ranching. For twenty thirty years, so they only know ranching. Maybe they don't know wheat or vineyards, for instance. So I'll reach out to commerce and see what their expertise is specifically on on kind of what they're looking at. But I don't, I think it's something that we could probably do both. I I don't see this as a.
As I said, I don't want to.
I think, and I and I do agree with. The with what we know with the vineyards, that that's kind of the the alligator closest to the boat type of deal. But that I think it is something that we can engage both, both sectors of the agricultural industry. So, and then that's it. So any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're good. Uh, we are flying through. Yeah, we are rubbing the room. I'm gonna bring up drone technology for code compliance again. Um. I brought it up when you weren't here. Um, and there's concerns about uh uh private property rights and airspace and all that kind of stuff. Um, what's your take? Is it something we should even remotely look into or not? Spend our time.
I don't have enough information to to weigh in on it. Maybe one thing I could have George do is um, he's a member of the statewide. Group now and he's gonna be attending the fall conference in a couple of weeks, maybe find out what other ca- if other counties are using it, how they're using it. And um, but as far as the legalities, privacy, property rights, airspace, those are um.
Our two questions were legal questions and then. Policy that this board would create on when it can be used. Because we don't want him just throwing a plane in the air and going and searching every property. You know, but maybe we write a policy that it's only used for public health violations. You know, septic tanks or something and not trash and vehicles or something. So if he can, yeah, do a little asking around.
If there's, if they have policies that they use them, uh, or maybe their sheriff's department has it, making access to it and then.
You can ask a few questions. That'd help us move forward. When is that conference? In a month, isn't it?
No, a couple of weeks. And then ultimately, the PA opinion request on the legalities.
Yeah, but um, just a simple Google search and I'm not saying this is, this is Google. It says, before using a drone in nuisance investigation, code enforcement officers should consult their local agency's legal counsel. In most cases, a warrant will be required before a drone can be used. I just, using drones is the top thing that came up.
Really?
It's what it does. Using drones and code compliance.
All right, maybe legal question comes first. Okay, I have a mask around. I mean, it's, we're not rushing this, but it's. Um. Just an idea.
I just remember there were a lot of discussion, like it got really heated a couple of years ago with Seattle. Seattle police officers wanting to use drones in downtown. There's a lot of ethical and moral considerations with regards to using drones and. And I can tell you from flying paramotors, you know, doesn't matter if you're legally in open airspace. Everybody thinks that everything above their house is theirs and they will definitely shoot at you.
I'm a shot at you when you blow, but I didn't. I'm kidding. I don't know, you flew over and took a picture at my place in Texas. Few years ago. Um, yeah, I mean, maybe it doesn't work, but.
I did do a real estate class at one time and airspace above your property to a certain extent is part of your property rights. So I think we need legal counsel.
Well, I guess I would then ask. Is this a conversation that? The board wants to have, or is this, am I barking up the wrong tree and let's not waste staff time and council time and?
I think if George goes to the conference. Let George go to the conferences, see what other people are doing, and it sounds like. From what Jake found or what Rob said, they could also coordinate with the sheriff at a certain point in time and use their resources if it's. Totally impossible to get what they need. So, let's give it a little bit of time.
Well, that's the problem. To get a warrant, you gotta have probable cause and you gotta have evidence, but if you can't get a picture of it, you can't get evidence, get warrants. You're kind of a. Interesting, okay. Tabled. Um. I guess I'll bring up one more thing that we haven't. Budgeted, but we gave, if I remember correctly, we gave uh Lynn, the Building Department Director. Uh, directive to see how much it costs to print the temps for country living. Um, that hopefully we can get an answer back from that, which I can't imagine it's more than a couple grand. And appropriate that in our budget somewhere so we can get that finally off our plate. As I'm scrolling through my list. She might be listening, maybe she isn't.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, I didn't realize that was on my to do list because I thought Lori said she'd help check into that, so that is something I need to do.
Okay, well, I let me confirm. Was that on Lori's plate or is that on Lynn's plate? All right, you're off the hook.
Okay, I'm not, oh, I messed up. All right.
All right, I'll hold Lori accountable so we can get our budget fixed. Thank, thank you.
I tracked down the booklet. That's how far I got.
Anything else, anybody? Go ahead.
I know Thursday would be kind of hectic, so I did follow up on budget issue for codes. Um, Six Rivers is offering that training, mediation training. For two hundred and fifty dollars this coming year, which is because they have grants to supplement that for Clicktack County residents, so normally it's much more than that. And I did talk to him about being able to utilize their mediation services for basically nuisance complaints. They said they'd uh, they'd be happy to assist. We could put them, put a link to them on the code compliance webpage. Um, there is a cost if if neighbors want to use that service and basically how they do it is, I think it's a hundred and seventy five dollars for each side. So one thing uh we may want to consider or not is if we want to. Budget for say, two or three of those so that as part of George's, he now has the uh twenty yard containers. And I think two hundred vouchers, so that's something he can use if he comes. On a situation where he thinks mediation will help or the neighbors think it would help, we could. We could actually cover that cost in a couple instances um to. Get to voluntary compliance, so you'd ask me to look into that cost.
How long is a mediation training?
Uh, well, when I went through, it's a week, forty hours.
For two hundred and fifty dollars?
They just had one class. I saw it on Facebook. They're graduating picture of, I didn't recognize any of the face.
It's 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 an amazing training, I.
I think that would be a good thing, but I don't know that I want to budget for that landowner's. Issue with that landowner and their mediation because that to me brings it too close to a gift of public funds.
Well, we could look into that. I hadn't thought about that. I just think if George has different, I I think there's cases where we would not want. Our code compliance officer to be the mediator.
No, but I think the training would be good for.
Right, exactly, and there may.
Not be the official mediator.
But I guess we could check on the gifted services. But I guess we could check on the gifted services, but if we can solve some through. Neighbors, working with neighbors and provide the tools, then it keeps it out of our system, which is, uh, three hundred and seventy-five dollars doesn't last very long in our system.
I know, I don't wanna add anything else to the budget, but I think mediation training could be very appropriate for the Board of County Commissioners as well, and for two hundred and fifty dollars, it could save. Many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars, if that's something that the board would be interested in.
I thought about it.
It's, uh, I not only did that, but I did the advanced workplace mediation in Oregon, which is roughly eighty hours total, so it's, uh. It's amazing training.
When is that coming up?
I'll find out, and I wanna make sure the two fifty rolls in the next year, so I was, wanna make sure she didn't think I was talking about like this fall, which George could do this fall. For two hundred and fifty dollars, we could find the money, but I, I will find out, uh, how long that lasts, when they schedule there.
For George, I think that's good, I'm. For funding. People to send there, I worry about how many of them there are. Because in talking with George so many times, they don't really fit into code compliance, but yet they're still having a problem. So, I'm not sure. We could cover.
Just trying to find any tools as possible.
I agree with Commissioner. Anderson. For us, if you can. Give us more advice on that clause.
Thank you.
Okay, um, what else do we got? Since we're blowing through our morning thought. Did I have any meetings?
November thirteenth, November sixteenth.
Last chance, any of you guys wanna do that legislative steering committee? Uh, courthouse tour. From Olympia down to.
Aren't you funny? That was your invite.
I was just trying to share.
I'll watch for one for you two.
Staff have anything for?
Pat Kennedy did, uh. Email or actually the. Email me to see if there was anything that you guys wanted to talk about and to set something up in the morning for kind of an update to see if there's issues that you guys.
I don't know that I have any, I think that he's trying to get to is get in front of the legislative session, so if we have a issue that we wanna bring. Up that he can be keyed in on it, do his background and his documents and, and everything before the legislative session is, I'm assuming what he's trying to get to.
What do we have locally that's gonna matter to us that's not gonna be high on law sec? Those big things that I can think about are things that take a lot more horsepower than just our little lobbyists for what we pay.
Uh, I don't know.
I mean, there's tort reform and joint and several liability that Texas has dealt with that we've never dealt with.
I don't know that I wanna be the front runner on that either.
Exactly, but that's what I'm saying, that was, that's a WAC thing, it takes a lot more horsepower, but these are the, these are the issues that. You know, are a ten-year plan. He kind of gives us updates, but in terms of actual lobbying for the county, what, how many times has he got you in to meet people?
Um, uh, not because we haven't brought him something where we need to. That we as a county wanna push an issue. Since I, last year when I was at the board anyway, we did not have. Um, cuz he came forward with us the year before with this kind of a meeting too, that if you have a topic, let's work on the topic. And then we can push that topic during the legislative session and we, that was before Lori got here. Uh, we didn't have anything to, uh, couldn't think of anything to, to work on like that. Um, so, you know, maybe we have it now and maybe we can think about it now, but.
So I guess one of the first things that can come to mind is what, uh, Richard just brought up, which is, you know, um. Appropriation requests for about five hundred thousand dollars for the airport. That he could help grease those wheels, um, working with other legislators, not just our two, but other legislators.
That would help. Ever- everything we can do is hopefully gonna help move something better than last.
Uh, the other big thing that we're gonna have, I mean, we spend a lot of money, uh, like, what do we spend, a thousand dollars a month or something on Zach?
Uh, I don't remember. How much do we spend on lobbying in our budget? I thought, I said, I didn't think it was that high because he's lobbying for, you know, twenty different towns, so.
Still not very much money, I mean. For the bridge, for example, you know, it's, it's about eighty thousand dollars a year that you spend on lobbying, but that's to get seventy-five million dollars. And so I'm trying to think, you know, in terms of lobbying for the county, what we can get for two hundred and fifty dollars. A month, um, you know. I'm looking at bills that just came in, you can't even get somebody to give you a call for two hundred and fifty dollars.
And I appreciate their updates. Yeah, it helps educate me and get me up to speed and it always touches departments. You know, Sheriff Department or somebody, there's always something in his update that is. Noteworthy. I can't think of anything to specifically ask for right now.
Most of the things I'm thinking of are, are a statewide issue. Uh, a statewide legislation-y kind of a. Uh, WAC thing and not necessarily a county lobbyist type thing, other than an appropriation is the only thing that I can think of.
Or you could try to talk him into getting someone to run a bill about FSEC.
It's spinning your wheels.
Has to go, some has to start somewhere.
Your authority, you're always spinning your wheels. For the most part.
That's interesting.
Legislation.
But I don't know, my point is, I don't know that you're. That we're. Working with Zach and investing, cuz it's gonna cost more than two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month to, to try to push a bill like that.
Yep.
Um, and you're gonna have to invest time and resources. Uh, and legal staff. Um, for something that's gonna be dead on arrival. Uh, and or, I mean, could, because WAC put. Worked a lot of their dollars. Um, to push the bill last year that just got immediately devastated by Cypress Creek taking over and. Um, they worked with Cypress Creek on the bill. But then when it got to the legislature, Cypress Creek went and worked with its constituents in the legislature to get it totally changed. So as I, I don't feel that it's a good use of taxpayer funds to.
I'd like to look at that just a little bit myself, just look into the background of it and look at how things have changed, information has changed. Uh, application process has brought a lot of things to light that has changed people's minds on things. And it's not just our county that we wouldn't be alone in this, there would be other counties involved. So I'd like to kind of investigate it a little bit.
Right, no, and I'm fine with that, I just don't think it's a Zach thing, cuz there's gonna be way too much time involved for two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month.
I think it would be good to have him because then we can ask him, what are you hearing that everybody else wants you to focus on and what can we do to support that if we agree with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would schedule and then we can also think if there's something else, I keep trying to think if there's something else, Kenny. That can. Yeah, schedule him and we'll do more thinking. Anything else from staff? Did we ever get a tracker in the white salmon vehicle?
Yes.
So we should be able to tell now when it leaves the county?
We got an email this morning or this weekend. About, uh, an update to the compact for. Uh, the Columbia Gorge Commission. And they would like to do that on a Tuesday from the middle of our day. And we got an invite. I don't know. How my seatmates feel about that, I don't know, I've not seen the draft where they say, we're just updating this little thing and this little thing and, show me.
Yeah.
I wanna see the draft.
Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, I read the email this morning and it, it seemed very vague. Um, you know, it, it tried to have the assurances that we're not going to change things or force counties or blah, 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 but I, I kind of, I'm with you. Um, when I read it, I'll believe it. So are you, um, asking to go to that meeting in the middle of a Tuesday or? I would imagine they're gonna record it so we can watch later.
Well, I, it wouldn't be me.
I think we, we need to be involved in it for sure.
I don't have any.
Uh, neither do I, but we represent everybody who does.
And we need to know what the future is for sure and stay involved.
Uh, would it? I guess the simplest thing is, is because she, uh, Christina sent it to all of us. Uh, have staff send an email back asking that, uh, the Board of, the Board of County Commissioners would like to see the draft.
Yes.
Uh, and, and Tuesday won't work for us, but we will definitely have comments. That we can. Hopefully all be on the same page.
I was thinking there was attachments in there.
Is that for next, is that for next Tuesday?
What time did that come in? It came from you guys? Who sent that?
I think it was BSCC that.
Okay, let me find it.
Draft revision to the gorge by state working group. And there's three things there, there's an agenda and a staff report. And, uh.
Oh, I did not see that staff report when I looked at it earlier. Governor's office. That's legislative concepts.
Thirty-two pages. There's a little something, something there. So that you got a little basic information there.
Report in support of legislative concepts. Boy, they're gonna spend it money, lawyers wrote this whole thing up. Um, I think it would be good for us to hear an update from our gorge commissioner, uh, on their thoughts on this.
So just our gorge commissioner come in or the whole?
That'd be fine, with, with our gorge commissioner.
Yeah, she represents us, so.
And I would hope that she's looking into this and can give us a, a good update of it.
Right, no, I'm just clarification, so we're not asking for an update from the gorge commission. Just our gorge commissioner.
Re provisions in Oregon's implementing statutes conflict with the National Scenic Area Act or the National Scenic Area Management Plan. Might be there for a reason.
Uh, there you go. So Oregon puts gorge commission in their whack. But Washington doesn't. And so they're trying to fix it because. Um, it says here it's not, uh, it's not a Washington agency, so Washington doesn't do it, this caused confusion in a Washington Court of Appeals decision. That would not rely on the gorge commission's rules. Because they don't, that appear in whack, so the gorge commission.
Are they?
Lost a court of appeals case because, and they don't wanna lose that, so, yeah, no, I mean, I can argue that, that's.
The gorge commission proposes to add a new provision specifying that each state may award grants or make appropriations to the gorge commission that do not require equal apportionment. In Article five, four. Because it's always been fifty-fifty, and then you have to work together and that's what makes it a compact, is one person can't just throw money at something they want.
Yeah, I mean. Anything they're trying to do, I'm suspicious of anyway, but.
You're suspicious of everything, aren't you?
Um, not everything, just. Just when, when entities or people have provided me good motive to be suspicious. I'm a very trusting person until proven otherwise. I don't know, we probably shouldn't just spend our whole time reading this by buddy on Zoom lands trying to figure out what we're doing. Um, any other? Fun and exciting stuff for the board?
Uh, just a little bit of update on the timber stuff for me, we set aside that, uh. Columbia Land Trust letter for support for the Legacy Forest. And, um. I guess I kind of need to have some talking points of where we're moving forward with the idea of timber in our county, uh, we had. Um, committed to meeting with Skamania County and talking to them, I don't know if we've heard back from Skamania County for a meeting yet, have we? I haven't seen it. Okay, I'll reach out to them today.
Joint meeting with Skamania County?
Yes.
We need to have a list of talking points, that's more than just one talking point, things we wanna discuss. Um, to be put on the agenda that they can also come up with their ideas of things they wanna discuss to put on the agenda before we can set a date, create an agenda. So there needs to be a little more, what are we talking about? Kind of scenario and give them time. Uh, to have a, what are they wanna talk about? Um, before the clerks can set a time and set an agenda and impose.
I think we can try to set a date because there's always lots of things to talk about when you talk with them, it's.
Yeah, no, we, we can set a date for. Out in the calendar.
Thursday.
Yeah, I'd say we do it on a Thursday.
Or whatever day works for them, it can be Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, doesn't matter, we won't be taking necessarily action in there, but. Posted like any other workshop, the public comment is. Uh, written comment is allowed just in case. Okay.
But I know where commissioners always coming with that is that the land trust needs to get to DNR those letters. Uh, bef- in the next couple of weeks, I believe, in order for them, for the. DNR to move their application forward to the Fed.
So they won't even move their application if our letter isn't there? Or our letter helps?
Don't, I don't quite know that.
I don't know that either, but I know, uh, Skamania County is in the same position we are. Is they've withheld, they wanna have more talks about where they're going in their future. Um, I think they have some valuable information for us too to share from what we've talked on the phone a little bit. And it, one thing they brought up to me, Skamania County had said there is available monies at DNR for counties to apply to purchase these properties too. And I'm not aware of any of that, but I wanted to explore that with them and see, is that something where we're going in the future?
Well, we wouldn't be buying it because they wanna have it, they might hold it in trust for us. But DNR is not gonna give the counties. Any timber property and that's been a long, hard fight because. When I first started for the county in twenty fifteen, we looked into that pretty seriously about taking over some management of our timber trust lands.
Right.
And DNR fought back. And DNR fought back as hard as possible. For that idea and you know, you know, it was, we want it back so it can be a community forest or we wanna use some of these properties that you're not managing. So that we can get some management off of it and and it was. Was a very big rock up an impossibly steep cliff. For them to give any of that back.
Have you ever had any conversations with them about uh carbon credits and what's happening? I have no idea what will happen with those. Forests that are transitioned out into carbon credits and how that applies to our school funding or.
So DNR itself is looking at selling carbon credits, so they are on board. They're looking at thirty thousand acres on the west side of the state um to put into carbon offsets. Most of that land wasn't gonna get logged anyways, so they're just trying to to sell 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 an added value into the market that they weren't gonna do much with anyways.
Carbon, I can't believe we're even talking about carbon credits. I just can't.
So how are they gonna reallocate that?
So when you sell the carbon credits, you that land is in one of the trusts, right? And so that money that they're selling that credit for goes into the trust. For that, and so they can use that money. Now, if you're selling carbon credits on ground, you weren't gonna log anyways. It takes a bunch of funny business because in order for to sell the carbon credits, you're supposed to be able to log it. And so then it comes down to the whole thing of, you know.
What is the value?
How long are they? Are they never get a login if they lock it up with carrier credits?
No, the carbon credits usually last so many years. Um, and usually it's a change. So say you've got a forty year rotation in your. Your harvest and what they're gonna do is is they're gonna move to a hundred year rotation. So you've got that change in in your plan. And so there's there's value in that carbon that's stored.
Until it all catches on fire from bad forest management, then it creates a bunch of carbon.
Oh, like just happened in Southern Oregon and Northern California. Burned up and and how do you reallocate that carbon? Cause you've already sold it and whose responsibility is it? I mean, literally, it's we're we're creating uh we're creating new ideas to sell something that doesn't.
Yeah, no, I think carbon credits to me is a Ponzi scheme and I don't really want anything to do with it.
But here's the thing though, is is so what we have in front of us is a company that wants to. Uh, sell off the development rights, so they're selling some of those rights on that property and they're gonna get the income off of that. And they're gonna use it to go buy more property or, you know, take away some of their debt. And then the next question is, is are they gonna come back and then sell carbon credits on that same ground and take off all the value off of it? And now it's in essence a wilderness area or open lands. I see both sides of this is is that they could do that. With or without selling the development rights. They could go sell the carbon credits right now if they want to. So and that's a again, like this board, which isn't the same board, we've always had a very. The board commissioners as far back as I can remember with private property rights is is if. We don't get in the middle of your private property rights and you selling something. Or us taking it. I mean, technically, we take private property rights too whenever we, you know, take someone's road easement or right away.
Well, and I I would agree that at least my philosophy is still the same as that is that you're allowed to do with what you're allowed to do within your business. And if a timber company wants to sell their mineral rights or their. Carbon credits or their whatever, I'm not gonna necessarily write a letter to stop them. Um, but it doesn't mean I have to write a letter to support him either, so.
But I think we need to understand more what our policy is as a board going into the future for this county. Everything's evolving and changing. And i- if we. If this happens. With our intention or not, it's still changing development. It's changing everything in our future.
I mean, one could also say that we have the wildland urban interface. Um, in the county and that wildland urban interface is an area where pretty soon you're not gonna be able to build. Just because you won't be able to get insurance on it. And this, if they were able to get this through for fifteen million dollars, it would remove. A good portion of the wildland urban interface from ever being built upon. At least on the west end of the county. Um, it would remove what is happening up here in the Simcos where you have one sixties getting broken into eighties and eighties turned into twenties, you know, overnight. And most likely over the long run, uh because of the the timber supply agreements, it would. Retain more land in actual agricultural timber production. I don't agree with all the areas they want to put it on. I think it would be more holistic if, you know, we got together and worked together and found multiple landowners that would that are willing to. Get in together rather than just picking one really big timber company. That's on a ten-year plan to get in and get out and make as much as they can. But at the same time, if they get in, get out and like locked up all those development rights, we know that the next person coming through. Cause when they sell, they might sell it in one sixties or eighties or follow this exact same thing. Is that what we wanna see?
Can they if they've sold the development rights?
Not if they've sold the development rights, but if they haven't sold the development rights, then they can do the exact same thing that's happening up here in Forest Resource. They can break administratively break up everything into eighties and then they can break and then they can short clad all every eighty into forties, all in timber resource.
But I I'm looking at that map that they provided. And which I think I filed accordingly.
It's such a double edged sword.
And. I guess I don't, I don't know the properties over there enough to.
A lot of it's Skamania, so that's Underwood Mount.
My point is, how much of this is ever developable anyway, or is it the top of a ridge line that's never gonna be developed? Cause it to me, it looks like they picked and choose in things that they would be able to. Looks like phase two to me.
This is phase two. This is phase three. That's phase four.
So it's just this piece here. It looks like the same dang color to me.
I gave him a hard time about that.
Because this is developable, obviously. Look at them little bitty parcels next to it.
Those are rules. Those are actually really big parcels.
Well, I get it, but my point is they're they're, you know, this. To me is something that may never ever get developed even regardless. Uh, but when you start getting into here. All part of this.
Well, you also have to think pretty much to here. National scenic area, right?
I guess I would say that. Part of me. Likes the idea of not be able to. Continue urban sprawl. Uh, in development along the rivers. Uh, to protect the rivers and protect the waterways, but part of me also, I guess, doesn't understand. Your side of it enough that I wanna hear that part. Um, to make sure that I'm. Not making half a decision.
Right, and I and I right now I don't have a side. I'm trying to understand now and I'm trying to understand fifty and a hundred years from now. And and what? The long range plan should be.
The long range plan changes every election.
Doesn't have to. I mean, if you do certain things, it doesn't change. Once you lock it in or.
Yeah, but nothing we do can be unwound by the next word.
That and you take off the development rights, they train re putting development rights on property really expensive.
Alright. Take my piece of paper.
So I'll reach out to them and and find out for sure what their ticking clock is on that decision for that letter of support or not. And then we'll have to try to speed the light on conversations for me, so I understand more.
We've given them the letter on the first one and they actually got it funded for all that area west of Trout Lake. This is a lot of this area is even more developable than that or closer to town.
That's why I was had a difference in this.
Would you rather see all that broken into twenties with roads all the way through it or would you rather see all that timber ground?
Timber grass question. The hard part for me is I don't want it broken into twenties, but. I don't want it put in timber ground that's not managed for fire either. So.
Well, but you also have to think if as long as it's in, the development rights have been taken away. Anybody who buys it is gonna be buying it for timber management for the most part. Because you can make more money at the rate of that growth than you'll make on the.
So I guess technically the only way that would put it into a fire hazard is if they then decided to sell the carbon credits on it. And take the value off the land to where nobody wanted it anymore, cause there was nothing they could do with it. Other than a conservation club, the Audubon Society or something that. Don't want timber harvest.
Well, and in support of this, we wouldn't have any say on the management, the underbrush and everything. I mean, we're gonna trust in. It just, it seems one more further step away to me by doing this.
What what do you mean one further?
Because I guess the history is showing that the carbon credits uh for fire and stuff are not a very successful move. So if we agree to this, I guess they could sell the carbon credits anyhow.
Like they can do that no matter what.
Right, okay.
Well, and I think I don't think this is a honestly, I can't imagine. That this is a, we have to agree to this for them to get it. I mean, I I think a letter of support goes a long way in helping them. But I don't know that even a letter in opposition stops it.
I think when you look at how many applications there are and they showed, you know, how many applications and everything, if you don't have local buy-in and we are considered the local buy-in. You're gonna be at the bottom of the list.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Cause most of that stuff all go by point scales.
So it comes down to they would like the letter signed before we. Meet with Skamania and get more information.
Well, I think they just have a due date. They were pushed up against. And that happened last year too. It came in kinda last minute of sign it. And then they weren't funded last year, so now it's back around.
Skamania wants to buy that property. By selling the development rights off, that property becomes less valuable and you can buy the timber cheaper. And longer. Skamania County would be using. In essence, the, oh, what's it called? There's state funds that were set aside for encumbered uncovered lands. So what they would do is Skamania, this DNR would buy property that can be logged. And then they would switch it. With the encumbered land, so then the trust for the county would be on land that could be logged versus versus land that's just sitting there. Because right now all the covered money's going in, it's meaning county's getting it, getting the money off of it. But then. Then DNR gets to keep the land, it's many county gets a one-time check. Okay, it's better than nothing, but I don't. I wouldn't have agreed to it in the first place, but still better than nothing and it's keeping them afloat, so I don't blame them for the actions they're choosing. But again, you could still do that after this.
Okay. And I think the argument there was is legacy forest keeps it in such huge blocks that deals like that would be very hard to do for a county at that point. That'd be such a big purchase.
Well, you know, you can still sell the land per parcel. Because it's in a legacy forest, all you're doing is stripping away the development, right? You're not stripping away the ability to sell that to the ownership.
Part one, I don't think.
It into huge blocks rather than.
It had blocks in the huge timber blocks. But, I mean, if we had the option right now, would we, do we wish we would have had this on SADIS? Or the Simcos? And look at what's getting broke up there and how that's gonna change the farming and ranching community of the the culture of this valley.
I see what you're saying.
Anybody know when the deadline for that letter was?
I have it on my list to ask them. Okay.
The letter that they want us to sign? Is by next week? So technically it's by today or it doesn't get signed.
Pretty much.
Oh, very interesting.
Yeah, and they give us to the okay. Can we take this back up this afternoon?
As long as we make a decision on it by the end of the day, I guess. Because, yeah, I'm I'm at this point unless I can be talked out of it. Um, I understand why Skamania wants to do Skamania thing, but. You know, I'm looking at it as a click of that thing. And I understand if we sign the letter, it might hurt them and their cause. Um, but. I I work for the Click attack county voter. And have to do it thrice by them, so at this point, I'm I'm leaning towards sign. Uh, but we can have future discussion this afternoon.
Uh, we could ask if Tom Lynn or one of the Skamania County Commissioners would like to come in later this afternoon. And discuss it.
I could give you your. Want to step out of their meeting. How do they use their full days?
I haven't been in a long time.
So I mean, yeah, I mean, if they wanna call it three thirty or something.
Are you gonna reach out?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, who's gonna? I'll do it.
Do it.
See if they have any time.
Uh, Lisa said she was gonna reach out to him.
Just gonna send it straight to him. Oh, our time this afternoon.
As I said, I think he's at three thirty or later. Um, technically, I mean, I guess I look at this two o'clock. And it's technically scheduled for about an hour. There's I don't see there's any way, shape or form that's gonna need an hour.
Yeah, I'd say two thirty. Put Tom in at two thirty. I mean. He is the the chairman of the state timber caucus, so he knew the right guy.
Cause that gives us a little bit of an update by him and his thoughts and then we can move on and have future discussion on it at three thirty and decide what we wanted to.
Would either of my seatmates like to discuss, do we need any pre discussion about our two o'clock? Or are we just gonna let her go?
Huh? Oh. I don't know, I I'm still of the opinion that. They need to be elected officials, but. Until we move in that capacity. Um, I mean, I I guess I don't know what the end result of the interview is going to be. Or what the questions are going to be or the purpose. I mean, i- is the plan to actually interview and ask questions and if we don't like the personal opinion. Um, to kick the application until we get one that we do agree with. I mean, this, this is gonna create. If that gets done, it's gonna create serious tensions between this board and the EMS board. But I still just believe the, the ultimate answer is. I don't know why this board is overseeing the appointments for a junior taxing district. Essentially, that's like us making the appointments to the school board or us making the appointments to the Parks and Rec Board. Uh, it's just weird. I don't know why it was ever done like that. Um, and it's still my opinion that we need to look at changing it or unwinding it.
In changing this though, I think we came to the decision, we wanted to see app, applications and we wanted to maybe meet the people before we made a decision. So I think that's why we're here today because we asked for that. So now your subject will go forward, but we need to get, you know, review his application and then meet with him today and then make our decision. And then after that, we can.
Um, I think you asked, you know, creating tension. I think there's already tension. I think there's tension primarily because of behavioral health and their, their boards unwillingness to direct staff to transport behavioral health patients for the county. And for us, that is a.
Stick you with it.
I was, I was gonna say that, that is our biggest problem that we're gonna have moving forward. Um, and we don't have any other options when we look, you know, AMS or whatever they, they've done eight. Uh, our own EMS has done two in an entire year. We have nurses and we have using Bessie or Betty or whatever it is, taking people and nurses putting their, their jobs on the line to do this to get people where they need to go because they care so much. And if people that we're appointing, because we're appointing to the board. Don't have that as a, we're gonna find an answer to it, then I, I can't in good faith. Make that appointment or agree with that.
Right, but that's, that's where I'm coming from is now we're, they're gonna look at it because they've always been this independent. Uh, junior taxing district with their own little jurisdiction and their own little board to, to do what they want to do and rightfully so. But I would also say that when they're finding applicants. Um, they're shopping to make sure that they line up mentally where they want them to line up. Um, so.
Can we have Tom Lennon call in right now? Will you, uh, email the Zoom? He's either got now till one thirty or after four.
So my, I guess my thinking is. Yes, if, if, if that's the, the, you know, they've. They're pretty adamant that they don't like the idea of doing mental health transports because of funding, but in all reality, I think it's paramedic safety. Uh, the paramedics don't want to do it, so they don't.
So if we do not appoint, if we make that decision that we have this division and we don't appoint, what does that do to their board? Right now for function and moving forward.
One person down until we find someone to appoint or they five, bring us another name.
Or until we change the function between us.
Well, that's me. I think if.
It's gonna be a year-long process.
Yes, it will be a year-long because we'll have to get it. If we're doing that, we need to get on it now so it can be on a ballot for next year. Uh, and that's why I said I don't want to just, if, if that's actually the end result, which I believe it should be. Because then if the general public believes that they should be doing something they're not doing, the general public can run for that office. And that will create a board of the people and by the people. And not a handpicked, hand-chosen, only one way of thinking. Uh, board, but it's gonna take time because we're gonna have to change the policy. We're gonna have to put it on ballots. They're gonna have to put their candidacy in in May.
But again, though, that's what it comes down to, whether they're appointed by us or they're elected by the, either way, there's someone that's in an elected position who has the finals, in essence, is the final set.
I just don't know why, I think it was originally, let me know when he's on.
There was, uh, there were, there were three positions that need to be OCC approval from the point of view.
I thought we had already approved two of them without an interview. And this is the first one that we're actually interviewing.
Well, but we also don't know this person. Mike Chuck's been on it for a very long time. That was a re.
Right, right, right. Um, so I guess. Yeah, I just look at it that, that I don't make appointments to the library board or the, the hospital board or the school board or the, you know, there, there, there are other taxing districts. Um, I don't know that we should have say or control over them. I think the public should. Uh, but why it was set up this way so that they could be hand-chosen to do the bidding that they were hand-chosen to do and then the county and the hospital district lost control of their chosen ones and they don't like the, the consequences.
Again, I'm not saying that the EMS district has not been run efficiently or well or anything else. I think what we're coming down to is.
Policy decisions.
This is a policy decision by their board that, that they're the only ones that can help fix this problem that I can see. And it's in their charter. It's their duty because these are county residents that need.
Currently, they don't, they are not held liable by the public. For failure to do what the public wants them to do. He better talk quick.
So.
Said you can always just throw him on a speakerphone too and throw the phone down in the middle of us. Is there consensus of the board to move forward with making the MS board elected positions next year ballot kind of scenario or? I mean, because that's gonna take legal counsel and I'm sure auditor's office with elections and um, that I can start having those conversations as long as I'm not, you know, barking up their own tree.
These boards that are, um, independent, but yet we have to appoint or we have to interact and then there's money that's moving are kind of a strange animal for me and I'm still trying to figure out what is kind of our legal obligation and connections to those? And should we sever those ties if we can? Um, or should we keep them to protect the public? If a board like this, um, chooses to set up a policy which isn't serving the public in my mind. What are our options as the county? Do we control that budget? No, we can't say.
All we do is appoint or not appoint. So technically they have five people we've appointed to, they appoint their own. We only get to appoint three, two of them have already been appointed.
Yeah.
On their whatever, three-year term, two-year term, four-year term, whatever it is. So technically we can say no to this guy. And every applicant they bring forward, but they still have four people to function in. Two years from now, two more applicants will come back before this board and you can say no to them and then they don't.
Is there a legal requirement for us to stay connected to them to appoint these people?
Not that I was, um.
I think the best thing to do in a situation if we're talking about this, I mean, absolutely not gonna say we're gonna move forward with making them appointed positions today. I, the only thing I could possibly say is, is I'd be interested in learning more about it. And would we find staff or the EMS board making a presentation on what they would like to, to see if they want to be elected or not? Because this is kind of like the whole WSU thing. And you've got contracts in place, you've got the, um, hospitals, you have the actual EMS, you know, this was created because the EMS was part of the hospitals and they, they were separate. And then we congealed it and put it all together to help out the hospitals budgets and to make the EMS have enough money to manage. And this was the outcome of that. Is it messy? Yeah. It was messy to begin with. And so I think the the only thing to do would be to have a meeting of all of the minds if we're talking about going that way. I think right now what we have to deal with is what's right in front of our face and that is, is, um, we can make our feelings known about the issues that we're seeing. And if we really don't like the person, we can say no. I mean, but when I look at his resume, he seems absolutely well-qualified. And these guys are doing this for free. You know, they're not getting.
As I said, I think all of their appointees are well-qualified, but I think it comes down to political ideology on policy desert.
Right, which is absolutely within, within our realm to ask about as we are appointing the person or confirming that appointment.
We not have his email right maybe? I had sent it. Okay.
I think that sounds good to have EMS to come in and have a full-on chat.
Well, I would think you need to bring the hospitals into because they're the ones that formed.
They want to move forward.
Well, we.
They formed the EMS district and had the commissioners do it this way because the hospitals were wanted to remain in control of the EMS board.
Not in control to have.
Well, in pulling the strings anyway. And then they lost control of the strings and now they don't like the outcome.
Let's have them all come visit.
As I said, I think it, it should be all of them. And the weird part is I think it should be all of the board members of the EMS board, but the problem is they work for Loeing. So the only way you're gonna get everybody in the same room is during a night meeting. Otherwise, you're just gonna get the one EMS guy again and not.
L A N E N at.
No, we want, we want policy decision makers, not that's.
That's the board.
Yes.
That's all five. Which means you're gonna have to do it as a night meeting.
Or we go to their meeting.
Or we go to their meeting.
I was looking up Tom Lennon to see if we had him. So do we want to have staff scheduled?
Uh, let's wait what happens today.
Today, okay, we can do that.
We must be boring everybody. There's only twenty-one people.
You guys see there's gonna be a four-day closure of the Hoover River Bridge in November?
That'll be interesting.
Uh, what dates?
Uh, November third, eleven fifty-nine of Monday, November. Beginning at twelve oh one, the morning of Friday, November through, through midnight, the night of Monday, December sixth. So it's closed for an entire weekend.
Wow.
Lovely.
That's okay. I'll submit the next weekend. And that's a long way around.
Tom should be coming on at any time. Rate of justice.
You gonna leave this description to Sol or since it's your baby? I will say hi and introduce him and then.
Oh, no, we can all.
Okay.
I think, uh, actually Commissioner Anderson does have more background between the counties and the timber and than I do. I caused all the trouble and brought up the subject and.
I usually cause all the trouble, so it's nice that somebody else thinks so.
It's something we needed to get done today.
See one of our local businesses, uh, had a. He's a good guy. Makes good food too.
I haven't tried it. Hmm, where is it actually?
You know, Huesum, okay, you know where Wet Planet is?
Yeah.
Okay, right before that's River Drifters?
Yep.
And so he's right outside of River Drifters, like in their parking lot.
It's a food truck, right? Kind of its name.
It's okay, it's kind of outdooring, but yeah. I guess he did almost.
Let's see on. Tom, are you there? Please zoom their meetings over into Skamania.
Nope. They don't, uh, zoom them and, um, they only audio record, no video.
They only audio record the agenda like we used to do, right?
I think so.
The action item. Tom, are you there yet? You need to, there you go.
Okay, what's up?
Nice to have you, sir. Um, the board was having, uh, some questions on the Forest Legacy Program. Um, and we wanted to hear Skamania County's take on the issue if you are willing to give it.
All right, this is a bit unusual and number one, I can't speak for the board.
Okay, speak for yourself then if it's fine with me.
Uh, I'm only able to make my comment, uh. So, uh, basically when this first came forward, why not? I have a lot of questions. Uh, most of those have been resolved. One of the issues is that this is private land, uh, that, uh, Green Diamond operates, uh, and whether it's in legacy or not, uh, there's been a lot of questions about the carbon side of things. And, um, they can go forward with carbon sale of the land regardless of whether it's legacy or not is my, uh, my understanding. So pardon me, uh. We're, you know, we have not made a, a decision on it. It's gonna be on our, uh, board meeting for, for tomorrow. Uh, and that, the carbon question is one of the, the major ones that, uh, I think everyone is trying to digest. So is there anything further?
This is Commissioner Anderson. Uh, Commissioner Lennon, would you feel a lot better if the letter said something in there about carbon credits and that, uh, we are supportive of this land being used for Fergus Legacy for forest repurposes? Um, we not necessarily are in favor of any of this land being used for carbon credit sequestration.
Uh, I don't think that it's appropriate for me to make a, a determination at this time, uh, on short notice, but it, uh, doesn't sound unreasonable.
Okay. Uh, we, we've been, you know, kicking around that, that same issue on the carbon credits, uh, before you got on.
Okay, uh, and again, uh, I just want to reiterate that these are my opinions only, uh, and not that of the board.
Right, nope.
But, and I appreciate you making that statement, sir.
And taking the time.
And taking the time. Do you have any?
That answered my question.
Okay. Yeah, we just had kind of a little bit of a question here. So you were the, uh, in a timeframe because. Yeah, we just had kind of a little bit of a question here. So you were the, uh, in a timeframe because they need this letter signed by the eighth, apparently, if we're going to do it. So for us, that means we have to do it this afternoon. So.
Yeah.
Uh, wanted to make sure we got any potential questions the commissioners had out of the way. Uh, before we enter into that discussion. So. Any other questions of our friendly neighborhood Commissioner Landon? I'm hearing none. Um, perfect. Thank you, sir, for your ability to jump online. We very much appreciate it.
Okay.
And let us know if you need anything. We're working with staff to try to set up a joint meeting with Skamania. Uh, so I guess I'll fill you in on that one. Uh, that hopefully we can pick a date and each side can pick some issues to talk about. Uh, and then we can set something up and and do our yearly meeting with you guys. So looking forward to that.
Yeah, those have been much appreciated and I think beneficial in the past. So. Look forward to it.
Perfect. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Take care. Have a good day.
You, too.
Um, what I heard him is is that he had a lot of questions, but most of those questions have got answered.
Yeah.
Throughout the process.
Um, so that's kind of where I'm at. The only real issue I have with it is. The carbon credit part of it because that's into that wire wildfire mitigation. So. Um, I would be in favor. Of supporting the letter with adding a statement of. Something to the effect that. We as a county do not endorse. Uh, and or support carbon credit. Type of scenario on there.
Over the, over the forest legacy properties.
Over forest legacy. But up for discussion.
How do you feel about that, Jake? It.
So carbon credit, carbon credits is, uh. Hotly contested, hotly debated throughout the Mountain West. As I understand it, we have never taken a policy decision on it. Um, we have not had, uh, the people that are interested in it, um. Come and present before us. Um, we haven't had, you know, no committee has looked into it. I mean, I could say that. In my previous position for the county, I looked into them. And I had many of the same concerns that Commissioner Christopher has on the carbon credit schemes.
I appreciate you using my word.
I'm using your word. There's different ways you can use the word scheme.
Yep.
And so. I don't think it's going to have any. Teeth or weight behind it. Um, and so I think I'm going, I'm going to reread the letter, um. Uh, that. Um, staff has wrote during lunch and, um. I would be okay with adding the letter under new business this afternoon, uh, for any final discussions of the board.
Perfect.
With the expectation that we will move on it in one way or the other. Would that work for you? What do you feel, Lori?
I'd like it. Include.
Okay, well, that gives staff a short amount of time to add a sentence. Okay, with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We adjourn for lunch so that staff can get to working on that letter.
She's like, please stop.
Six minutes before lunch.
But she needs to give her six minutes for that letter.
We have a motion for lunch. We have a second.
I'll have a second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to adjourn for lunch back one o'clock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of journey for lunch, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We'll be back at one o'clock. All righty, are we ready? I'm going to mute my phone here. All right. Being as it is one o'clock, we will call our regular business meeting, the Clicktack County Commish Board of Commissioners to order. Uh, let the record show all three commissioners are present and we will open with pledge of least.
Let's leave the flag of the United States of America. To the Republican Party stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Entertain a motion on the business agenda or changes on the business.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with, uh, one add on under new business, the Forest Legacy Letter for the, uh, Columbia Land Trust at two thirty.
And I'll second.
Right, we have a motion to second for approval of the business agenda with the one add on. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the business agenda with the one add on, uh, approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August first, August eighth, and August fifteenth, twenty twenty three, as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion to second on the minutes. Any comments on them? I will say, I will make a comment that I think the minutes are very well, and I think you've done a very good job. So good job with that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes from August first, August eighth, and August fifteenth, twenty twenty three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, next up is citizen comment. This is a time where the citizens have to address the board. Uh, please keep your comments limited to three minutes. There will be a clock on the screen for anybody on Zoom land. Um, try to also keep your comments pertinent to county business or things happening inside the county. And please state your name and general location for the record at the start of your comment. Uh, the commissioners do reserve time at around one twenty five to have remarks or answer questions or. Uh, so if you do ask a question, hang around, it might get an answer at about one twenty five. Uh, we usually start in the room first before we go online, so we'll check there before I go there. I'm not seeing it so far. And there was one in the room. Go ahead and come forward. And then if you can look at those mics and make sure they're green and not red. Then you're good to go and just state your name and general location.
My name is Patricia Shamick. I'm a four H leader of forty three years. And a former program assistant. And. Hearing what I have heard, which. I hope is correct or really I hope it's not correct. I understand there may be some cuts to. The extension budget. Our program is starting to flourish well. And. Any cuts there. Are. Ones that could affect our four H program. I've made some notes. There's supplies and and things that. The Extension Office has that really we need. To make copies, to to do things that affect what we're doing. Many of our camps, many of the things that we do. Are really. Affected by this. Uh, we also need the ability for our. Four H. Program assistant, and I'm not sure that's the correct title anymore. To travel throughout the county. Sometimes I know there's a new club in Bickleton. Uh, she needs to have. Four H representatives travel up there and be able to help her get that established. Uh, also Glenwood has. The need to sometimes have someone there. We also need to. And I I think this may be a little far reaching. But we really need that position. Of the office manager replace. As a leader that comes from Bickleton or Glenwood or White Salmon. Or even myself, we go in there. And if Harley is in a meeting. Or she is busy. Then that means trips back. For me, it's not a real problem. I live in Goldendale. I usually call Harley anyway, but. Sometimes I know some of the others have come in from Bickleton. Especially our new leaders. And they get there and she's tied up. When Erica was there, she was able to assist him many times with simple requests that we have. Those are the things we really need to have. To make our program work. Today I am accepting record books from kids. Who have put their year in. This record book is very well done by a seven year old. She's learning skills that will be life skills. This one is done by someone who has a learning disability. And as you can see, she's worked hard all year long. I just want to make sure that. We can look at support through the commissioners. Uh, to keep this program going. Last year I had. Thirty seven books turned in. I see I'm running out of time. This year there was eighty. It's growing, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I encourage you to stick around because I I for one at least will have comment.
Okay.
Um, we'll go online. The firsthand I saw was Tracy. Go ahead, Tracy.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Tracy Benson-Curdy. I'm the former office manager of the WSU Extension Office and the Noxious Weed Department. It has recently come to my attention that the county is thinking about abolishing the office manager position and also supporting funds. To run the extension office and this saddens me. Um. The Extension Service, uh, plays a significant role in American life. In the rural, urban and still suburban areas, um, predominantly helping farmers, ranchers achieve greater success, assist families. With nutrition, home economics and prepare, prepare today's youth to become good citizens and leaders of trial through the four H program. The position of office manager is and was a full time job with numerous phone calls, walk-ins, requests pertaining to the WSU element. I know firsthand that this office cannot run itself and continue to provide good client services enclosed without someone manning the office. There are many hands-on services that are done. Soil sample testing, pest and plant issues, food preservation questions, veteran cooking testing, farming, keeping information. Loaning out a simple hay probe, searching the wide WSU network of research-based answers to any given question, all while providing valuable support to the four H coordinator. Reduction to the operating budget would significantly change what type of work both the county director and the coordinator. Would accomplish by not having the needed resources to do their job effectively. In addition, the lack of operating budget would affect. The valuable collaborations with various entities to provide education to a wide variety of groups. Through programs that the community has come to attend, engage with, expect from the Extension Office. It takes talent to people with resources for a successful county extension. The Extension Office is an incredible resource for the residents of the county and has been in place for many years. Look at that county residents deserve to continue to have this face-to-face resource available to them today. In addition, Hannah Brous has been a wonderful asset to the county through her many programs. Working with Hannah was the highlight of my career. Her energy is contagious. Her work ethic is something to achieve. Integrity is something that comes to my mind when I think of her. If she believes in something, she would go after it and do whatever she can. To facilitate it to the best of her ability. As a boss, she was continually positive and honest in her evaluations and was always setting me personally up for success. Her wealth of knowledge and a wide range of things assisted me in helping the citizens of the county. Again, it would be a huge loss to the county to not have an open door policy with smiling face to welcome the residents of Clicktack County to the Extension Office. Having done this work myself, I have, I feel like I have a unique vantage point that the resources that the WSU Extension Office, Office, Off, offer. Are valuable and meaningful to a diverse audience across the county. It's for these reasons and more that they encourage you to continue to fund an office manager and operating budget for this important county department. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go back in the room. Anybody else in the room have a citizen comment? Come on, folks.
Kathy Moko, Goldendale. I have two things. Um. One thing I would like to compliment you all on the wonderful. Historic pictures that are all around the courthouse. And. I urge people to come in and look at them. There's one down the hall of the Kalondike Hotel in Centerville, which is. Didn't know that was there, but I guess Centerville was quite a big spot at at one time. And, uh. It looks, it's very interesting and it's, it's, it's a good thing. On another topic, I will say that the county extension and. Everything they do for this county is exceptional and. From what Pat just said, eighty children, you know, turning in their books. They do a really good job and it's such, it's really important for them, so. Urge you to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back online. Um, Jean.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. I just have two quick comments and a question. Uh, the first comment is a, a thank you, uh, to the Public Works Department. Uh, they've been working with us. For probably over a year now, if not more, uh, to work on the road between Snowden and Appleton. Um, and they've recently started laying gravel down on that road. Um, and it's been a huge help, especially since, you know, with the recent. Changes of weather that we've had. Um, so the areas that were impassable before are now more passable. So it makes a huge difference for folks. Uh, taking their kids to the bus stop and so on. So, uh, the second thing I have is a comment, um, and I'm not sure if it is. Pertinent to the, uh, timber discussion that you were having this morning, Commissioner Zoller. Um, just a consideration for something for the agenda, just the timber. The, excuse me, the use of the roads for the timber companies. Uh, that's one of the issues that we had. And that the reason that we brought our, uh, the condition of Sleepy Hollow Road to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners originally, uh, was because. It gets beat up. The roads get beat up out here, um, and particularly during the times where timber companies are transporting, uh, the, the log. So. Just something to consider. I'm not sure if it's appropriate in the context of the discussions that you're looking to have, uh, just, just an offering there. Uh, the question I have is regarding the budget workshop. Is that also streamed? Like the V O C C meetings are? Thank you.
Um, thank you, ma'am. I'll answer the quick question. No, our Thursday meetings are workshops, so they are not streamed. Only our Tuesday general business meetings. Uh, they are open to the public, but they are in the building. Uh, go back in the audience. Anybody else in the audience have a citizen comment they would like to give today? Come on forward.
Ron Iraik, speaking as Fairbaird President Goldendale. I need to mention to thank the board. As from the Fair Board for all the help. And the excellent job that Public Works had done before the fair, during the fair and after the fair, because. They do a lot of work. And the adult juvenile probation department. Before the fair, helping. With Public Works and after the fair, helping to pick up, uh, garbage. After the fair, and I needed to thank the board for allowing that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe they're both listening, so they heard you. Uh, we'll go back online. Does anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Seven, two, one, one.
Greg Wagner, seat. The draft short-term rental ordinance prepared by the county P A, Mr. Cannell, is poorly written, vague, no monetary penalties, open to interpretation, unenforceable, and should not be the basis. For a county short-term rental ordinance. In fact, Mr. Cannell does not have the authority under R C W thirty six twenty seven to write a county ordinance. This is a law. This appears to be a violation of separation of power. The judicial should not be writing the law. His responsibility is to be the legal advisor to the legislative body, the commissioners. The commissioners minus Mr. Anderson should be preparing the short-term rental ordinance, then have Mr. Cannell review, advise and approve to form the ordinance. Mr. Cannell should not be allowed to participate in the short-term rental ordinance proceeding as he has a conflict of interest due to his close relationship with Mr. Anderson. He has been Mr. Anderson's legal advisor in Mr. Anderson's underage drinking party at his unpermitted short-term rental at fifty eight Anderson. Mr. Anders, Mr. Cannell advised Mr. Anderson that he was not required to be a mandatory repo reporter. Mr. Cannell's actions appears to be in violation of R C W forty two thirty six, the appearance of fairness. The short-term rental ordinance is a land use issue and Mr. Cannell is not qualified to make decisions on this matter. He has hired outside legal counsel for past land use issues, tractee, republic amendment, and the republic tax appeal. And has stated he is not qualified. None of Mr. Cannell's staff should be involved with writing of a short-term rental ordinance. None of Mr. Cannell's staff should be involved with writing of a short-term rental ordinance due to their relationship with Mr. Anderson and the influence Mr. Cannell has over them. Mr. Cannell and his staff should recuse themselves along with Mr. Anderson. It would be inappropriate and unethical for Mr. Cannell and his staff or Mr. Anderson to have any involvement with any decision concerning a short-term rental ordinance. The White Salmon Short-Term Rental Ordinance is far superior to Mr. Cannell's draft ordinance and should be considered the basis for a county short-term ordinance. With minor revisions, this could be an excellent short-term rental ordinance. There is no reason to reinvent the short-term ordinance wheel. Many exist in other counties and cities and can be used as examples speeding up the process. The writing and enactment of a Clickatet County Short-Term Rental Ordinance has been intentionally delayed far too long to benefit Mr. Anderson. Unpermitted short-term rentals such as Mr. Anderson is a liability to the county and the taxpayers due to the unsafe condition and operation. Should a guest be injured or killed at an unpermitted short-term rental like Mr. Anderson, a lawsuit, a lawsuit will ensue wasting taxpayers' money. Unpermitted short-term rentals are a loss of tax revenue to the county and if not assessed in accordance with PTA eight dash one dash two zero zero nine, additional revenue will be lost. The Planning Director, Ms. Lynn Blatt, has stated multiple times that all short-term rentals require a conditional use permit and there is a process already in place to obtain a conditional use permit. This process, this is the process that all citizens, including Mr. Anderson, should follow.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. We'll go back in the room, does anybody else that has not had a chance have a citizen comment for us today?
Good afternoon Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, my name's Lisa Evans, I live in White Salmon. And I guess I just want to plant a seed of strategic thinking in your minds, I've had a lot of people over the past couple of weeks start noticing COVID comments again and masking and this kind of threat over everyone's heads. This is Clickatet County and, you know, the Board of County Commissioners, kind of, you set the tone for our county and our, sort of our communication, I guess, between us and the state. What, you know, over the past couple of years, we saw our schools, the quality of education go down for our schools, you know, who suffers from that but our kids, right, so thank goodness for things like these 4H programs. But then as a result, now expenses are up, income is down, and now budgets are being cut. So for example, in White Salmon, right, the schools there of the high schoolers, only forty-two percent passed the minimum English standards and only thirty-six percent passed the math standards, but somehow the majority of the high school seniors graduated from high school and I just, I just think that's such a disservice to all of our students in this county. You know, we, we can set the tone and so I guess what my thought is on this is, you know, when COVID first came out and the symptoms that everyone described, my first thought was, oh geez, we have homeless people in Portland and Seattle living in not good conditions and they're not very healthy. If COVID is as bad as they say, we are, our homeless population is going to get decimated. After two weeks, when not one homeless person died in the streets of Portland or Seattle, I said, that's it, I'm done, COVID is, COVID is not exactly what they're saying it is. So that was my barometer and then that's how I handled my life going forward. And so I guess my question is to the county commissioners, I just want to plant that seed of, you know, what's the barometer, barometer in your mind? I know you have the challenge of what the state is going to try to pass down and force on us versus, you know, what barometer do you have in place so that we can use common sense and get our education back up? You know, we should be at eighty, ninety percent for these kids and then not to mention everyone and their jobs, that's still all rolling downhill. You know, I just drove three times as long to pay twice as much for a couple ton of hay. Expenses are hard and I've heard this from a lot of people, they're still not recovered from the loss of their jobs due to vaccine mandates. A lot of this, as you can see from the budget stuff, is still rolling downhill, so I just want to plant that seed of, you know, can you figure out what your barometer is for these situations coming down the road, thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, we'll go back online, Anita has her hand up.
Thank you for your time, yes, Anita Clever from Goldendale. I would just like to know if there could be a discussion or someone that could elaborate on the budget deficit that's leading to the the way that the proposed budget and the cuts that are coming. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, anybody else?
Love the simple questions.
Yeah, as I say, usually very rare does somebody not take their three minutes, so. I see four-nine-zero-one, looks like it's unmuted, I'm not sure if I have that correct or not, I don't see the hand up. Anybody?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon Commissioners. This is Sherry and I was listening to what Greg had to say and I would like to also say that I believe that having the judiciary, an attorney write an ordinance law for this county is in direct violation of separation of powers. And I must admit, maybe I'm not as educated as I should be as one of the people and we should be educated on, so we can see what's happening with our government and we can make our government accountable if they start going a little sideways. So, again, I do believe that that is a violation, a direct violation of having an attorney write the laws for our county. And also, there is a short-term rental for White Salmon. And I don't understand why you guys are dancing around so much trying not to, you know, just write something that says people need to get a permit, they have to have certain things checked out, they have to have their permit annually updated. I don't understand why you're trying to reinvent that will either, it seems to me as it is an en favoritism for Mr. Anderson's unpermitted short-term rental and we also know there's a wedding venue as well with a road that is not adequate. So this has been called out publicly again and again and it's time for our government to become accountable to the people. You have a job to do and when you're violating the RCW's revised Washington codes, you are public officials, you've taken a note. You know, when do you start respecting the codes? So we've pointed them out time and time again and as we talked a couple of weeks ago, I've become very frustrated as I pulled back the curtain on how is our government really going to permit a conditional use permit for a small city up on the National Wild and Zenic River with an inadequate road? And to make the slap in the face even worse, there is no evacuation plan and that is disgusting given the fact that we know people can be trapped on roads and burn in fires, Paradise, California. So, how did our government do that, oh, through a lot of magic tricks and special favors and ignoring a lot of concerns and safety of the public health and welfare of our citizens. So, I just want to say, you know, real quick also, I support the 4H, you know, I don't have a child in it, but let's give those kids something, you know, you guys just got a four percent government just got a four percent COLA increase because apparently you have inflation and we don't. But, you know, some of that money could be allocated towards our children. And also I'd like to echo the fact that what are you going to do when COVID ramps back up, are you going to make us all mask up again? You know, what are we going to do, are we going to shut down the schools, are we going to limit our children? You know, there's a lot of things that's happening with our children, we're turning a blind eye on like the books in the library. But, you know, what they're teaching our children, but let's not, you know, make life hard on them again, you don't, okay. So, don't let you people write your laws.
Thank you. It is now one-twenty-five, which is the time Commissioners have to make statements. I personally have a prepared statement that I wrote that's coming from me and not from the Board of Commissioners, I would like to make that perfectly clear. And I will take the opportunity to go first. It says, hmm. It reads, I would like to say that I am personally very disappointed in the public statements that WSU Director Brousse is making in regards to her budget. They are wholly disrespectful, intentionally inaccurate, misleading, untruthful, and in a very poor form. Let's address the removal of funding for the part-time county employee used as a WSU office staff. I don't see any way that any Commissioner on this board can continue to place another county employee under WSU Director Brousse's management. Doing such would provide the county no way to protect our county employee from any potential mental, verbal, or emotional abuse or any other potential violations of employee labor laws. Also, at this point, it would make the county culpable to continue doing so. To protect the county taxpayers from risk of litigation, WSU needs to manage their employees and the county needs to manage our own. Now let's discuss the 4H program. Contradictory to the misinformation currently being released to the public by Director Brousse, this board will continue to fund the WSU 4H Coordinator position because we feel it is a much-needed resource in our county. For the record, there has been zero talk by this Board of Commissioners into funding the 4H Coordinator position or closing 4H programs in Clickatet County. The next issue is this board's current position to remove discretionary funding like travel, training, fuel, and fuel from the WSU budget. I personally see this as needed for two reasons, number one, WSU is acting as an independent contractor in providing their services. Independent contractors are customarily expected to provide their own supplies, tools, travel, and training. This WSU independent contractor position should be no different in order to reduce the risk of liability to the county. This is also how Skamania County handles their WSU contracts, so this way of thinking is not uncommon. Number two, this also comes down to trust and honesty. The voters elected me to be vigilant in protecting taxpayers' funds and I take that responsibility of the utmost importance. When I see something illegal or unethical, I call it out and I try to get it stopped. When I see Director Brousse's expenses like one thousand dollar beach travel reimbursement request come across my desk for a coastal invasive species summit, I owe it to the taxpayers to investigate. Upon investigation, I find that this was only a four-hour conference and it had zero relevance to Clickatet County. Add to that Director Brousse's reimbursement request was for three nights lodging plus meals for a four-hour, one-day conference. Sorry, but I personally find expenses like this to be nothing more than beach vacations with our friends that Director Brousse wants the taxpayers to pay for. I'm sorry if this offends, but I owe it to the taxpayers to act. With questionable expenditures like this, example that I'm giving, there are more, in a pattern of dishonesty shown to this board, I personally have no way of knowing what taxpayer funds get spent on county business and what funds get spent on personal items, simple as that. In closing, I find it very unfortunate that we now must discuss WSU dirty laundry in public, but the way I see it, that this board is currently left with but with no choice but to finally take action to protect the taxpayers of this county from any future potential violations of employee labor laws and also potential future abuses of taxpayer funds caused by non-county employees. And that's my statement on WSU. Kathy Moko, pictures, I agree, that was my kind of project, the one thing we're still missing is a placard that explains what they are. So still working on that, but with everything else, I haven't had time. But I'll get to it. Jean, Public Works on the road up there, I'm glad it's better. I too have concerns like you of the timber companies maybe using and destroying our roads and then the taxpayers fixing them. So hopefully those conversations will be had by this government and will make the users pay for the damages the users cause so that you don't have to. Mr. Irig already mentioned, thank you, and I'm sure the people you mentioned, thank you as well. Lisa, I agree with you with the COVID, I don't disagree with any part of it, so. Budget, the budget and the budget deficit, so that's a hard one to explain in a two-minute kind of a deal. We do have a budget book and our budget workshops are open and I would encourage you, anybody that has questions about the budget, give me a call, send me an email, I'll sit down with you for six hours and and go over whatever part of it you want to see, but trying to explain it in a two-minute public comment, essentially we are down, in the short gist, we are down revenues because we lost Nohomish County's landfill. Republic lost that contract, so we no longer get Scott, you said Skagit, okay, I said Snomish, sorry. Skagit County, so we lost about six hundred thousand dollars there and so we're having to make adjustments for that. And then when you see the cost of goods and services go up ten to fifteen percent, but our budget only goes up fifty thousand dollars a year by levy because we don't go out for levy to increase everybody's taxes, it's it's put us in a predicament that we're trying to find a way out of, so that's the short, the long is call us and we'll sit down and have a much better conversation. I stole all the time, feel free, whichever one of you wants to go next.
Go ahead Jake.
Tough act to follow, I know and I apologize.
Are you going to, do you want me to go?
Go ahead.
Okay, give you a breath. Yeah, to all those who value the WSU program, you have to know that the county commissioners have your back, we couldn't think more of that program from all the way back to Susan Kerr forward, it's been a wonderful, wonderful program. And as a child being involved in programs like that, they shape your future, those are good memories and those are things that we want to encourage. And you're right about the books, they, they help you build skills and things that sometimes you don't get at school, but you fit into those programs and they can help you move forward to a brighter future. So we know, way, shape, or form have gone near that program or want to cut it. And I have to apologize for Harley and those that work in that office, they're very, very valuable and we would have never, ever wanted them to think that they were not and we care for them as people and as employees. They deserve the best working conditions possible. WSU, as far as dirty laundry, I don't look at it as dirty laundry, WSU is a valued partner too. And this conversation was between WSU and the county, it was weaponized for one person's use and that shouldn't have happened, but we are continuing those conversations with WSU and we'll make sure that positive things come out of that contract with WSU, that's our goal. Lisa, I agree on the COVID, I see that looming on our future again, I'm hearing those things popping up and that concerns me. One thing I can say about the schools is, please, and I've said it for a couple of years now, watching what's happening in our schools is activate and enable your school boards. They're the people in charge of our children, they're the people that need to be at the helm of those schools and we need our school boards back in functioning again to the capacity that they are supposed to be, that's been taken away from them and I've watched it happen at the state and I see what's happening all over the state because of that. We need interested parties that are willing to work and fight for those kids. And with that, I will yield to Jake.
I always like to start on a positive note. So Kathy, thank you always for your positive comments, it is the breath of fresh air that we all need to hear when we sit up here on Tuesdays at one o'clock. And thank you also to Mr. Irig for the same about the fair and the people who deserve the kudos. They deserve all the kudos for all the hard work from all of our volunteers on our fair board. The people who work for the county, the county spends a lot of money on the fair and it is well worth the money and well worth the pennies. Oh, to talk about 4H. I hear what you're saying, Ms. Shamick. Thank you Tracy for your comments. It was very difficult to hear you Tracy and I know you were reading from something that you had written out, could you please email that letter to the BOCC email address? I would like to read it in full, please. Not once has the board said that they will remove the positions. The board did sweep everything else from that in the draft form from that budget. You have heard from Commissioner Christopher, his rationales and reasons why, as well as the support staff position, the point-six FTE. We have an MOA with WSU that requires us to provide the support staff, the services, the travel, that is part of an agreement from two thousand and twelve and I do not think that we can just sweep it without first renegotiating that contract. I am the first person to say, I think the 4H program has the immense amount of value for our children. I want to see it continue and I want to see it funded, it is it makes me so happy to hear that we have eighty of those things turned in this year. Because that means it's growing, it's flourishing, that's what it's meant to do and I want to see it succeed. Because that means it's growing, it's flourishing. That's what it's meant to do and I want to see it succeed. Whether or not the administrative position, uh, the front office position is underneath the county or if it's underneath the WSU as a WSU position, I see value in that office position. Because that person does a lot of things that gives Harley the time to do all the rest of the work. I see value in that. And the costs are not astronomical for that. And so I will be a vote in favor of that in the future for ensuring that that is funded. I can't tell you where it's gonna go, but I can tell you where I come from. Lisa, we have, uh, I heard this morning our first, uh, COVID case with a county employee who had to go home. Uh, what I'm hearing and, and is, is that this new, which we haven't tested, but it looks like the new strain is a nasty one and it knocks you down pretty hard. Um, I think that, uh, I'm, I serve on the Board of Health. I will do what the health officer believes that we need to do. I think we've got a good health officer. I will listen to him. Um, I think it behooves all of us to use our best management practices. If we're sick, we don't go coughing on other people. It's just good, common courtesy. If you are really sick, follow the CDC guidelines and everything for how long you should isolate uh, or, or stay away from other people. I do not want to see us go back to the days of shutting offices down, shutting schools down and everything else. I think that, that COVID is manageable. The, the current, what we're seeing, it will be manageable and we won't go back to those, those bad days. But God forbid, I think if anybody has a cough, you should probably cover your cough. Wearing a mask is not gonna kill you, but it should be voluntary. If you don't want to do it, don't do it. But I'm sorry, the eastern cultures for a long time, whether it's Japan and China have always, whenever the sick is around, they cover their cough because they understand that it limits the spread and, and everybody's gonna catch COVID. I'm sorry. It is just that bad. For most people, it's not a big deal. And you go about your day and you go back to work and everything else. I don't want us see government overreact like we did in 2020. That's my goal. And I can tell you that I will always use my rational judgment to ensure that we're not overreacting with regards to budget decisions or COVID or anything else. Uh, and with regards to the budget, um, thank you so much, Anita, for asking. Uh, it started this year with a $4 million budget shortfall. The Finance Department in a short amount of time took it to a $2 million budget shortfall. And then the Board of County Commissioners took it to a $1 million budget shortfall. The last million is always difficult. I'm getting there. After two weeks of hard work, we've taken it down to $686,000. And that's, that's to balance the budget. We are required, unlike the federal government, to have a balanced budget and we will get there. And we are going through, we are to the point, the last million's always the hardest. We are going through those budgets, line item by line item, trying to make up the difference. We made $150,000 in one afternoon and small little things here and there that people are gonna left to live behind. Luckily though, what I can say is, um, we have some revenue funds that are coming in greater than expected. One of those is interest earnings. Right now, interest earnings are really high for if you have cash. I can't promise that that's gonna be there in the future. I can't promise what the Federal Reserve's gonna do. And so I always personally budget very conservatively on revenues and a little more on expenses. We will get to a balanced budgets. We're required to get to a balanced budget. And we also never spend all the money that we do budget because there's always vacancies. And so if we're within three or $400,000, I'll feel really good about the budget for next year, saying that, that we will be able to put a little bit of money even after supplementals, hopefully into reserves would be, would be my hope. Um, but we will get there, but we are having to make hard top policy choices and hard decisions to get there. And it's never easy. It's real easy when you're bringing in more money, but as Commissioner Christopher said, we get 1% more money for the Road Department and the General Fund. We all know inflation's a lot harder than that. We're just having to manage the delta. And with hits coming to the landfill, that one hit alone would have balanced our budget right now. We would, we would have been done today. Except for one loss in the landfill. And so I hope people realize that is how much value that the landfill brings into Clickatet County and that's what it. And that's, that's in truth how we get there. Um, if we lose more contracts, next year's gonna get tougher. The year after will get tougher. Uh, we need to know that our job is to provide core county functions and services and we will continue to do that one way or the other.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, and I would take a second to um, agree with Commissioner Anderson that I, for me anyway, the budget time of year is the hardest time of year. It's the time where you're the enemy. You're the everybody's enemy. There's nothing you can do right uh, because you've gotta get money from somewhere. Um, so somebody needs money taken away or an employee needs removed. And do you fill a position or not fill a position? Because if you fill them, you might have to let somebody else go over here. And everybody's very it's like specific on their budget. This is all I care about. Just, just leave my stuff alone. They, they don't care about that budget, that budget, that one or that one. We have 27 different budgets that we have to take down as a whole. Uh, to try to share that burden of the cuts across all of them. Because I've yet to see a budget that says, okay, don't take from mine, but hey, lay that person off. Nobody's willing to throw that guy under the bus, but they're very protective of their own. And I understand that, but that's where we get in trouble by making the hard decisions that need to be done to get us to where we need to go moving forward. So enough of that and we'll move on to happier things like boundary line adjustments. Come on down. It is now, uh, 1:30. Thank everybody for public comment today. I think it was very enlightening for the commissioners and I, and hopefully it was also, uh, enlightening for some of you. And again, if you have questions of any of us, just reach out by phone or email. And at least myself, I can say that I will be happy to be with you and I'm sure my seatmates will as well. So we are past 1:30, but at 1:30 is our time for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. And right now we have a staff update on a boundary line adjustment.
After all that. There's sweets back there if anyone needs to sweeten up.
That's first of all.
Okay. So this is a boundary line adjustment for BLA 2023 dash oh nine for Bliley and Gangware. The boundary line adjustment is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcel zero three, one, 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 zero, 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 five, zero, zero and parcel zero three, one, 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 five, one, zero, 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 two, zero, zero off of Bates Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a section of 11 Township Three Range 11 Lament Meridian, Clickatet County, White Salmon Vicinity. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the Road Health Treasurer's Office and the Planning Department. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA 2023 dash oh nine.
Any, he's looking at a map, so I'll give him a second to look at his map.
Thank you, sir. As always, the computer freezes.
That's me. It kicked me out of mind while I was, while she was talking, so.
I don't have any, uh, questions or concerns.
I don't either. Ms. Silver, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
With that, would you entertain a motion, sir?
Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion, sir.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Uh, we have before us, uh, a consideration of approval of boundary line adjustment BLA 2023 dash zero nine in the White Salmon Vicinity. Uh, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve boundary adjustment BLA 2023 dash zero nine. Um, any further discussion on that? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Get a little bit of paperwork done here and then we'll move on to our next up. We have a sign and then I'll start you. I don't want you to be talking while we're rattling papers around up here. By the way, your handwriting is far too pretty. When it comes down here to the chicken strap, scratch section. It's a comment I was looking over there at your notes going, huh, I can read those.
We need to be left-handed.
Oh, you brought up the left-handed.
Yep.
Alrighty, thank you, ma'am. Okay, that is done. Uh, next item is a public hearing to consider supplemental budget for, uh, that's actually 2023 dash two uh, in amendments to various funds and departments of the 2023 budget. Um, expenditures in the sum of $373,464. With that, I will declare this public hearing open. Uh, advertising for the purpose of this hearing is to accept public testimony both in for and opposed to the proposed 2023 supplemental, uh, amendments. And we will start with a staff update from our finance manager. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, the second supplemental budget of 2023 fiscal year includes eight requests and one technical adjustment, um, to the sum of 373,464. That breaks down into three different funds of emergency management. Um, one due to the new oil fire, um, and then the others is communication officers and dispatch services. Uh, we have some general fund requests, um, of a retirement in one department, um, an unforeseen incident with a jail door. And then, uh, a contract adjustment. And there was also some change in some legislation.
Okay. Um, with that, I will now open the public here, in hearing for the purpose of receiving both testimony for or against uh, the amendments to the 2023 budget. Um, with that, we'll start in the room. Is anybody in the room have any testimony for or against uh, this supplemental budget? Seeing none, we'll go online. Anybody online have any testimony for or against approval of this supplemental budget? Seeing none there either.
Funny though, I think everybody fights over is money, but when it comes before us, either in budget time or in supplemental, you get no responses.
Yeah, nobody shows to the budget meeting, nobody shows up supplemental talks, but that was kind of what I was saying. It's just everybody guarding their own. Um, I'm gonna do a last call for public comment, either for or against the supplemental budget, either in the room or online. If you have it, speak now before I close public comment. Not seeing any. All right, we will close the public hearing to further public testimony. Um, I'll ask my seatmates if there's any discussion amongst the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say thank you to, uh, Jen uh, for all your hard work on this. You do an absolutely fantabulous job and keep up the hard work. Um, and I don't have any, any questions. For, for the record, for the public, most of these, uh, budget changes and supplementals, a lot of those come in as new grants that we get throughout the year. Um, a lot of those you see twice on there because you got money coming in and money going out, and so it makes the supplemental look larger. And, um, most of those things are budget neutral. Uh, they're just being moved around. Um, and on top of that, we've already paid most of the bills, so it's not like we don't have, we don't have much of a choice. Uh, but with that, if you'd like, Chair.
Um, in a sec, I would also thank, um, Ms. Jen from Fiscal because I think part of the reason why we might not being, be, being as having as much comment from the public as we've had in the past for supplemental budgets is in your packet, you do a very good job of explaining um, why this, where these fundings are coming from and what it's doing. So I think a lot of the questions the public has on these supplementals is being addressed before they come here to ask questions, to get answers to what you've already essentially written. So I want to thank you for that. Uh, any further discussion before we hear a motion? I'm gonna entertain a motion.
You closed it.
Oh, um, no, I didn't. Uh, with that, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion on the matter.
Mister Chairman, we have before us, uh, the supplemental budget 2023 dash two and amendments of the various funds and departments for the 2023 budget expenditures in the sum of $373,464. Mister Chairman, my motion is to approve said supplemental budget.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the 2023 dash, dash two supplemental budget? Um, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Um, thank you, Jen, again.
If I may, um, if the public has any questions um, or concerns with not just supplemental, but the budget as a whole preliminary and what's already adopted, they are always free to email me or call me. I can explain in, in detail or meet with them to go, go over it.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, we try to be very open with the public, whether that's the commissioners having sit downs or um, our staff, so take advantage if you have questions. Um, with that, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Mister Chairman, we have before us eight items on the consent agenda. My motion would be to, to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the eight items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approve the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Do you want the warrants?
Sure.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the account payable warrants in the amount of $903,976.59 for the date ending September 5th, 2023.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Any discussion? Uh, I guess I would say I looked through all the bills once again. Um, and I didn't see anything that stood out there or I would have drawn it to your attention. Um, any other discussion on paying the bills? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the approval of the first and final pay estimate for the slope flattening and guardrail project CRP 370 in the amount of $264,283.37. Bids were publicly opened at 1:30 PM on June 6th, 2023 in the Commissioners' chambers. Frank Gurney Incorporated was the only responsive bidder with a total amount of $301,623. My motion, Chairman, is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve, pass them at first and final for slope flattening and guardrail. Um, any, any discussion on this? No. All right, all those in favor of approval of CRP 370 in the amount of 2,000, 264,283.38 say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Move on to pay estimate, the second one?
Uh, Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the final pay estimate for Courtney Road CRP 342 and CRP 343 in the amount of $507.19. Bids were publicly opened at 1:30 PM on June 6th, 2023 in the Commissioners' chambers. James Dean Construction was the lowest responsive bidder.
Uh, question before we have a second, does that date seem correct to you? Sure we don't mean 2021 or 2022? Cause we didn't just do that two months ago. I just write the things on the paper. Got it. It's, it's.
It's probably just for that pains.
Like that beat just doesn't work for me. I don't know that it's something that has to be cinched away, but.
We just need to make sure it's right on there.
Maybe you can find it. Had to been twenty twenty-one.
Uh. Unless it was in a different phase.
Just it's all under the initial Courtney Road project, so.
So there wasn't a second, uh, we want to let that motion die and I'll make another one.
If you're ready for it, yeah, we can.
Okay, uh, Mister Chairman, we have before us the final pay estimate. Of the Courtney Road CRP three four two and CRP three four three. Uh, in the amount of five hundred thousand and seven dollars, five hundred thousand, seven dollars and nineteen cents. My motion is to approve said final pay estimate. I'd be glad we're done with it.
I'll second.
All he did was remove the date.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, so we have a motion in a second, yeah, because it would be incorrect with the date, since we couldn't find the correct date. Uh, technically, you could have made an amendment to your motion, but since you didn't, we just let it die. Um. Hearing no further discussion.
Didn't even ask.
Any, well, any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say, um, I flew over the Courtney Road project and, and I looked at it from the ground and. Our staff and public works did a great job designing that project so that it is safe. It moved a humongous amount of material. And I just want to say our public works has done a very fine job on that project. And I am really glad that we got it all done. And I know you weren't in favor of it to begin with, but let's, uh.
Move on.
That's a whole other story and I'll keep that one to myself for now. I've already had one public statement today, you don't need to. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the final pay estimate to Courtney Road CRP, uh, three forty-two in the amount of. Oh, that was completely off then, um.
That was the original?
Either, either way, okay, let me.
Motion in a second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second before us, all those in favor of approval of final pay estimate for Cardi Road CRP. Three four two and CRP three four three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so I'll just make that like as simple as possible, so we don't have to redo it again. Uh. Is he on? Now, see, we're even two minutes early, I managed to catch up. Let me get to Mazumis. Get to Mazumis. Uh, next item up for business is an interview with Adam Wagner nominated. Uh, to director position number three on the EMS district board, for those of you that are unaware, the way the EMS district board was set up. Was that they pick candidates to be on their board and they are sent to the Board of Commissioners. Um, for approval, so that's essentially what we're doing now is, um, interviewing or asking questions of a potential candidate. For the, um, EMS district. Uh, with that, Mister Wagner, are you there?
I am here and I went ahead and put my camera on so you can see my mug.
Perfect, you can see mine too, and I apologize for that.
Yeah, me too.
Um, any questions, I'm trying to get back to your. Um, application that you turned in, so we'll, we'll open it up, you have a, you want to start with kind of a, a general. Who you are and why you're trying to be on the board and that kind of a thing?
You gotcha, um, so yeah, my name is Adam Wagner, uh, I've lived in Clicktack County for around twelve years, my family here. Uh, and I've also been in EMS, oh my gosh, most of my life, most of my adult life. Um, part of that journey was in Clicktack County. Um, part-time, um, but what I've been doing for the last ten years, uh, uh, outside of EMS work is, uh, directing and teaching in the program, the paramedic program at OHSU. Um, so you know, I had, there were some folks that reached out to me, um, said there was an, uh, empty spot and, uh, that I'd be a. Reasonable candidate for that, and I think I can bring some great industry knowledge to the table. Um, we spend a lot of time doing pretty massive student projects and looking for grants and. Um, working with the EMS industry, especially, especially in the Pacific Northwest through. Covid, through all these changes that, that we're seeing and, uh, you know, I, I've got my thumb on it and my finger on. The pulse of the industry pretty well, so I'm hoping that I can, uh, serve, serve them well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
One of you like to begin?
Go ahead. I just have to say, uh, looked over your resume, it's awesome. I think you're a perfect fit and well overqualified for that position, um, I'm thankful that you're willing to serve and thank you very much for stepping up.
You bet, it's my honor.
Adam, thank you, it's nice to put a face to a name, um, I am highly impressed with your resume here for all of the things that you have done, both professionally as well as volunteer. And, uh, cannot thank you enough for everything you've been doing. Um, I guess I'm gonna get right to, uh, the meat of this and, and that is, is that, uh. The EMS board, um, is, three of those positions are appointed by the county commissioners or affirmed by the county commissioners. Um, I'm not sure if, if you've been aware of the discussions that the board has been having with the EMS board. Um, on the issues and, uh, the past about a year. Um, but if not, um, I'll give you just a brief overview and that, uh, mainly comes down to, uh, behavioral health and mental health care. And, um, we in the county have, um, taken over crisis management and we are currently building a behavioral health program. For the county, for all of the residents and, um, uh, our, our one last, um. Gap in service is going to be, uh, when we have a pi- a, a client in crisis, we need to get that client. To the, the proper medical facility that can handle them. And, um, so far, we've, uh, we've been, we've run into many roadblocks with regards to the transportation of behavioral health patients. Um, and getting them where they need to be in a timely manner and getting them there safely where we do not, uh, incur additional liability and risk to the county. Um, and so with your amazing background and teaching and learning. Um, I would love to hear from you if you have any, any ideas, um, and I know you haven't started yet, but. How maybe other places are managing this behavioral health crisis in terms of transportation?
Yeah, and you've opened up, uh, what I would say an industry can of worms right there, um, it's, this is not the. Click attack county is not the only place that's challenged by this at all, so thanks for the rundown and I, um. I do have, uh, some of an idea of, of what's going to on in Click attack county, but I'm, I'm eager to get into the details. Uh, but what I will say is that nationally and especially in Oregon and Washington. Uh, what we're worried about more than anything, and I say, when I say we, I say a lot of the organizations like. The American Ambulance Association, um, some of the unions, many of the unions, but what, what the worry is, um. Is provider mental health more than anything, um, because we've ran into a lot of burnout after covid. Um, and it's, it's pretty unprecedented what's going on with, with the EMS industry right now and. In particular, you're seeing a lot of, of organizations pay a significant amount of money compared to before, sign-on bonuses, all kinds of things and. Everybody's looking and I know Click attack county is too, and I know that's a little bit of a separate. Deal, but when we're talking about response and we're talking about mental health, um. A lot of these organizations, including myself and the school, kind of put the mental health of. Of providers first right now, just because we're trying to keep that industry on its feet and keep that industry strong. Um, and strengthen it a little bit more, so, um, I guess the long roundabout answer to that is, you know, mental health and how we define. You mentioned crisis, um. It, we deal with a lot of emergent responses, right, where there could very well be. Uh, someone going into a mental health emergent response where there's danger to others or to themselves, and that's when we bring in pharmacology. That's when we bring in law enforcement and we try and balance that scene out, stabilize that. And unfortunately, the way our system is set up, those tend to go, those patients tend to go to the ED. And I know you're probably running into that and it's, it seems as if you've grown a pretty good response to that for structure with mental health crisis. So I think where I'd start is further defining, um, what you mean by. Crisis and what an emergent response is, because, uh, we could have. Patients that need care, um, elsewhere. And those would be non-emergent transports and then that gets into, you know, the contract and all those negotiations you, y'all have with the service. So it's, it's a hard answer, um, but that's, that's something we can all dig into and start to define better and. Manage, uh, and, and hopefully we can come to a, a, a common ground on that once. Es- especially once I get all the details in my head and we, we work it out.
Yes.
You done?
Yeah. Yeah, no, okay, so where we're at is we, the county have taken on a whole lot of effort in the transport of these people with. Uh, voluntary, voluntary patients, people who have not had their legal right to freedom removed. Uh, because they're a threat to themselves, we are doing all of that part. The part that we need is, is when somebody is in the ER and a DCR has spent all night with them and worked to find a bed. And we have a sheriff's officer who's been on for god knows how many hours waiting there. And we finally find a bed for him, because you know there's not many beds available, and then when it's finally time to go. We can't find someone to transport them, uh, for one reason or another and. Um, from, I guess, I think the board's perspective, the EMS district has to be a piece of that puzzle. Because we have had, uh. Hospitals and nurses and sheriff's officers taking on a lot of personal liability to transport these people. When they should not be doing it because they're trying to do the best thing they possibly can, when we may have three ambulances. Around that aren't transporting and a fourth ambulance or staff that's there available. Uh, I guess the only thing I can ask is, is that if, uh, we are to vote for you and it sounds like we are all very impressed with you, we would. We need a solution. And I hope that with your experience, knowledge and background, you can help us find the solution to the problem.
You bet, yeah, I mean, I obviously can't solve it now, but these are hard problems and like I said. There's plenty of other, uh, organizations dealing with similar challenges, this is a national. National deal here and you know, the liability, uh, you know, that, you know, if, if EMS responders. Take on this, the, these patients, that, that spreads their liability and we have to get into the details of how that affects their. Response readiness as well, you know, same thing with sheriffs, I mean, they have to manage that as well, those law officers do, the nurses do too, so I think it's. I think it's a matter of balancing that out and I, I believe there are plenty of non-emergent. And I can get into this on our next board meeting, but I, I believe there are a lot of non-emergent transports. Already, right, transfers.
Not by the EMS district, so the EMS.
I mean, I, I'm talking like medical, medical, uh, transfers. Not psychological.
Oh, non-emergent medical transports that the EMS district does, yes, I believe the EMS district does transports all the time, emerging.
Good, so it'd just be, uh, you know, uh, looking at those on top of the medical transports, so I mean, it, it's a, it's a matter of numbers and it's a matter of politics and I'm happy to dig into it. And find a solution, hopefully find a solution in a timely manner.
It's all we can ask.
I think so, yeah, my, I think Mr. Anderson addressed my concerns, my other concern is the way this board was founded. Um, this EMS board was founded. Uh, you all as directors on the EMS board get, uh, approved in your appointment by us, the other option for that. Um, that the board, when this EMS board was founded chose not to do. Is that the EMS Board of Directors runs for office, runs for election for their seat in front of the general public. Um, because. I guess for me, that's still the way to get it done and do it right, because I have no control over your policies, I have no control over your budget. I have no control over where the EMS board spends its money or doesn't want to spend its money. Um, so in the same regard, why should I have control over the appointees for a junior taxing district? Um, I wouldn't have control of the appointees for the high school or the school board of directors or, or any of that, so. Uh, I'm rambling, but I guess I would say if this board so chose to make the. EMS Board of Director positions elected positions like school board or what have you, would you, would you be interested in running for that seat?
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they chose to do that, I, I, I put my hand in, absolutely. Now, this is a, I mean, for me in my career where I'm at, I, I've, I've been sucked into Oregon a lot and I've lived here for quite a while. So I'm pretty happy to give back to the community and I, I'm happy to. Run or get into the board, however, you know, you deem fit.
Okay, because your resume is, uh, impeccable, sir. Um, and, and you definitely have the years and the knowledge and, and I hope you can stay one way or the other, you will stay. Uh, volunteering in a part of Click attack county because I think you can be useful, so. Um, that's all the, the questions or statements I had, we'll pass it on to Commissioners, do you have anything?
I have nothing, I'm very impressed with Mister Wagner and I'm glad he's willing to step up and address our concerns and work with us in the future.
Okay.
You bet, thank you for having me, thanks for putting me in your busy agenda here.
Yep, thank you, sir, uh, we appreciate having you and we, uh, will move on until the next time we talk.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, we have a motion to make, would you like me to?
Head make motion, okay.
Let me read it first, well, where you make the motion, then I have to stop on your first.
Okay, good. Mister Chairman, I have a motion to support the Click attack county emergency services district nomination of Adam Wagner. To the director position of number three, representing district number one, which is an unexpired term of three years expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, oh. Is that incorrect, twenty twenty? Okay.
He's got to interview again in two months.
Scared me, yes, okay, okay, we didn't have a different date thing, so that is correct, thank you.
With that clarification, I'll second the motion, thank you.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on the matter? Besides mine.
Um, guess he's got two months to figure it out and we can talk again.
I, I have nothing against the man, like I said, he's entirely qualified, but it is still my opinion that these. Uh, the Board of Commissioners should not have oversight over junior taxing districts, it's up to them to manage their. Resources and it should not be up to us to manage their resources, so I'm going to abstain from this. Um, I'm not gonna vote no on it, but I'm not gonna vote on it either and nor am I gonna vote on any future ones. Um, because I disagree with the policy of this board voting on them. So I will abstain. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion before us, um, to. Acceptance, Adam Wagner, right?
Yep.
Adam Wagner for the EMS district, uh, Board of Directors. Uh, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, oppose, none, abstention myself, so we have two yeses and an abstention, sir, you are hired. Um, thank you and we're sorry.
Uh, I appreciate it, thank you.
Make a difference, sir, that's what we're asking you to do. Help your community, do what you can and we appreciate anything you do. Uh, moving on, uh, we are well ahead of schedule.
Legacy letter.
Um, if you want to go to that, we can go to first legacy letter.
That's the next thing, isn't it?
It is, unless you had a, some of the slot in there somewhere.
Uh, made last second changes right at around twelve fifty-five, I would, um, don't know if that got sent out or not. It was the previous one that got sent out?
Previous one got sent out, my son.
Okay.
The most current?
I'm saving it here, Jim.
Bear with us in Zoom land, we're reading a letter, we didn't fall asleep or. Bear with us in Zoom land, we're reading a letter. We didn't fall asleep or anything. Scared our last audience member out of the room. Good day, sir.
He didn't even speak.
I read the letter, I can, I can concur, I can support. Unfortunately, it turned it into two pages by adding one sentence, but you know, I guess it would have been two pages anyway. Um, is this the?
That's it.
Did you guys write abstaining on that one for me? No, you did. You're going to come back later and say you missed one and I'm just going to sign it. How much discussion we have, I think all of us probably, well, I'll just speak for myself. I'm still kind of leery about. Possibilities that could be happening. Uh, in the future with that Forest Legacy program, but I also worry about the possibilities that could happen if we don't sign it. Um, it's just one of those. You know, a lot of times when I make a vote, I'm very strong or very adamant, or I believe this is what the people want me to do. Um, on this one. I don't think there's really a people on either side of it kind of a scenario, so. Um, but I think it's the right decision.
I'm still thinking.
Yeah, I did some thinking uh through our lunch hour and I've landed. On a site that I'm comfortable with, that I think helps preserve. Um, our ideas of what forestry should be in the future. Uh, things evolve and change over time. Um, and we have to do our best to preserve what we can preserve. And I think we've made a good statement in the letter about how we feel about carbon credits. Uh, leading towards kind of our county, county's policy on that.
I would say um that Western Clickittack County is one of the most beautiful places I've ever seen in my life. Um, everyone wants to move there, everyone wants to live there. Um, it has wide open spaces and it has large timberland tracks still intact. And that was due to the family that owned and managed that timber ground for a very long time. Uh, when that was sold, um, a lot of that could have been broken up, much like we're seeing in the Simco's. Um, and turned into twenty acre lots. I, when I look at. Um, some of the properties going into convoy and some of these, these large lots that warehouse are sold that are getting broken up into. Twenty acre lots or um these houses put in places that I would have never thought somebody would ever think about building a house. As I continue thinking about, you know, changes in the zoning code in the future. Well, if this goes through, this, this is incoming to encompass a good portion of all this land that's owned Timber Forest Resource Land. And you've just locked it up. You don't need to change the zoning code because all those private, all those developer rights are gone on a good section of that. And uh, while it always. Gets under my skin a little bit when someone buys property and then sells a good portion of the, the right off the property. And pays it back and they still own it. That's just good business. Still gets underneath because we're using. Public dollars to do it. And uh, so that's where my moral dilemma is always comes in at. With that though, these, these funds have been appropriated by the federal legislature. They have been decided that this is where we're going to. Continue to uh deficit spend on and um if we can protect a, a large section of our resource lands with these. Um, it makes our, our. Comprehensive plan, planning and our zoning updates a little simpler because a large section of that land has been. Uh, preserved for forest resources, everyone. Uh, everyone who knows me knows how much I care about our forest resources, I mean. And my family and what, what we've done, you know, for business for a long time and I. I'm glad to see those lands kept in forestry use, large, large tracks. Um, I hope, and if anybody hears this in the future, I hope that. Um, with these also legacy also retains the open character so that the public can still enjoy these lands. Um, into the future, uh much as the, the family uh used to allow. People, I understand why these lands are getting blocked up with the, their forest fires and the way that people. Desecrate the land when they go out. Um, and so while I have a lot of hopes uh for the future. I also know that I, my firm belief in private property rights, this person wants to, or this landowner is willing to sell off their development rights. Um, now uh and forego that in the future and. Uh, if there's a willing buyer and a willing seller, I'm not going to get in the way of it.
Well, and maybe some thought in the future too, Jake, about the use of those funds selling some of the rights. When you look at those businesses and the impacts they have to sometimes setting aside things, preserving things, but yet you were. You regain some capital that helps them stay in business and helps them stay healthy to be able to do that. So it all has one big circle.
Oh yeah, they'll go buy more timber ground.
As they keep it in timber.
Right, right, I agree. Uh, and with that, um. I know we went around and around, um, and usually we just sign, but with that, um, I would make a motion uh to sign the letter. For the Forest Legacy application.
And I have a second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to sign the letter for the Forest Legacy application. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval and signing of the Forest Legacy Letter, say aye.
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 Aye, most impressed.
I'm sorry, I was reading the next email.
Because if I didn't, it would have been followed up by any.
One more.
All right, one more. Got to read this one. Make sure Shane's slipping in and I've given away, given her my house.
You know how she is.
She owns my boat.
Do I need to sign that?
Probably.
No, it's already signed.
I just missed it. That's why she likes to sign anything early so she can catch it all before we leave the room.
I know, it's a good idea, so. Then they aren't here till six.
Organization.
October ninth, are we somewhere October?
See, we thought it was going to be a late day and we are flying.
Okay, what you guys want to talk about? If all the cities are coming in, I'm hoping we can talk about more than just the court costs.
Sure, you're laying that one out there. Uh, yeah, no, that makes sense to me. Did you guys see the email of the Fair Board's long range plan?
Yeah.
The negative to me is it doesn't cover putting a new barn on their livestock though.
I would, uh. I would just say that, you know, we had a lot of discussions over a long period of time. Uh, the PA had uh feelings that we should use the criminal court cases because in his opinion that. Has a closer relationship with the workload and the, and I don't know how much you know, so I'm just kind of going through this. The old way of doing it was we only looked at, we looked at all of the poss, all the cases and there's a lot of. Little tiny things that are just court documents that go into it that all get stuck on. But again, all those take time and um. We also only charged for a portion of the judge's salary. We didn't charge for the processing of them. We didn't charge for the bailiffs. We didn't charge for anything else. And the cities historically, their percentage of the court cases overall have been dropping precipitously over time. And or the county's per- percentage has been going up. And in the end, the agreement was is we would look at the overall expenses of the cost. And because we have pushed forward our um budget program. Now would be the time for the cities to come in and say, whoa, 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 you're spending too much money in West District Court. We don't want to spend that much money because all it is is a three-year rolling average of. Uh, what percentage of cases they are and then we look at our, our adopted budget when we adopt it. And then they pay quarterly or annually or whatever based on their percentage of that adopted budget. At one point, we were talking about removing the revenues out of the expense side of that. But the problem with that is that we found out is, is that the court. Takes the revenues for the cities and sips them straight to the cities. So it doesn't go into, so in essence, we'd be, we'd be eliminating our revenues. While they get to keep theirs and then looking at it and so then it would be even bigger. Now, the original thought, and this is why it took so long, was. Let's negotiate, why don't you go out and figure out how much it would cost to run your own court? Because.
Heck of a lot more than twelve grand, I can tell you that.
Because that's what they did. Uh, Goldendale walked away back, one fifteen years ago or something, two thousand some. And they ran their own court and I think they made it about a year and then they realized, uh, this is expensive and so they wanted to go back and. I'm a firm believer, absolutely, it's, it's economies scope and scale and absolutely we should provide the services, it just needs to be equitable. And so with what we have right now, yes, their, their rates are going to go up a little bit. Because it covers their portion of the bailiffs and everything else. It isn't going to go up anywhere near what it should cost them if we just entered into an agreement. But they're also, the cities are in worse shape than we are when it comes to their finances too and. We've got to work together. So that's kind of, and, and.
And so you've had this conversation.
The, the mistake that was made is, is that we adopted the ordinance. Prior to the agreements with the cities and. That was, that was this board's mistake and I will take ownership of it because this was kind of my baby going through. Um, and we had a change of staff at the time and we lost some of the documents for a while, um. And that's okay, we'll get back through it. I do not think that we need to likely rescind the ordinance. I think that we just need to adopt the agreements and we go forward. If anything, if they want to push on that, I would say, well, then we're throwing probation at the same thing. We're just going to write it on down. Then we'll do it. If you want us to rescind the ordinance, we're adding.
So do you think they're just coming? Does they have a problem with the procedural file that we did this piece paper for this piece paper or do you think they're got some sticker shock on the number?
The number's not that high.
I, I, I looked at the number and I was like, really?
This hasn't even been worth my time.
You're going to wind up with fourteen grand, you know, in two years of negotiations, that's.
Uh huh.
So, yeah.
Well, and if they come and they want to throw a fit, we can go, okay, well then the price is straight fifty grand. Just to cover our time dealing with, which.
Did you hear that?
That was. Just so you know where we're coming.
Speak a little louder.
No, I don't want to play hardball. I just. The, the email that was sent from the Bidget City Administrator was a little, and I've seen other emails. Oh, you think you, very good, very good.
I know, I'm off putting is they were more friendly, a friendly way to say it. Because I'm such a friendly guy. Um, yeah, no, I.
Burning over a new rock in the middle of the day.
Correct. And in the future, if we do everything upfront and in an order, maybe there'll be no question.
Either way.
So going forward.
Either way, if they want to include the revenue side, I'm going to say, then you have to include your revenue side on the back of it too. Because that's unfair and everything we've done is fair.
Well, yeah.
More than fair.
Well, more than fair.
Okay, well, I'm glad we're.
Because if you think you can step up a court system, a judge. Um, and probationary services and office staff and court clerks for twelve grand. Have fun with that. I'll send you a coroner next year.
Mitch, we probably need to talk about that too.
We're going to need to schedule a nice friendly time where.
I think next week sounds like a great.
Well, I.
Let, let everybody know this is what's coming.
Yes, but I. I believe the coroner conversation, I would like to work with our contracted coroner. And our prosecutor. And have everybody in the room at the same time to see if there's even any interest from our contracted coroner. And what his opinions are. So I do want to hear the. The thoughts of our prosecutor, but I also want to hear the opinion of the person that we're currently paying fifty grand to, to the coroner.
Deputy.
Then whatever. Questions whether he's going to do the work. Is he going to be a contracted employee for us? Is he going to have to be a paid employee? Is he going to have to be an elected employee if he's got no interest to be one of those? It's going to change our opinions going forward. What kind of staffing does he think he's going to have to have? If we go this route versus that route and those are the points that I don't know that you're going to get from anybody other than a. Specialist in their field.
So the other thing I think um would be nice to talk about is that it needs to be. An office because you have to have some, you know. The question is, is I know Skamania County is coming across this as well. Is this something that we can partner to make it more affordable for both of us? But there's a lot of other very interesting things with this interpretation. Remember that the coroner. Uh, if the sheriff is uh no longer capable of. Or is incapacitated, the shi- the coroner becomes the sheriff. Weirdest thing, but again, this is, this is.
Nineteen twenty is logic.
Yep. But, but I guess in that situation though, if we had a coroner over. Two counties, how could they be the sheriff over?
Because that would be an elected position. You have to live in town.
But I think you're just assuming the role. You're not, you're not running.
In that new uh requirement from the state, can they be a contractor any longer? Do they have to be?
So we've had multiple conversations with prosecuting attorney on this. Uh, my advice would be is to give him a call. So that he can explain it to you as he does. Um, I'm not going to try to.
Like I said, I would, I would suggest we have him have come in here. And have this conversation. We tried to have this conversation once before. Our schedule on our agenda was running a little long and I was five minutes late. To start that workshop and um he decided to leave.
Could we request?
So my hope is that we request him to come back with our current.
Give us corner one oh one.
Well, and I, I, that's why I'm saying and hopefully reach out to the contracted coroner. Um, and get, figure out a date that works for everybody, whether that's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever, whatever time. And I will assure them that I will keep to the clock and stock them on their time and then make sure you schedule them for an hour. So if we run out in a half an hour, we can say bye and we can just figure something else to do for the other half an hour, but I don't want to have to send them away because we have somebody else starting.
I would just like to tread very carefully on that because that contracted coroner is technically technically. Deputy prosecuting or deputy coroner underneath the coroner and we cannot. Request or ask, we can ask the coroner if he will bring that person, but we cannot direct or anything that person to come. Just throwing that out there, um, other electeds. With, not with this department, it's with a different, that would be like, that would be like us telling.
Uh, I think that was the word. I don't know whether that.
I'm just, just let's not step on toes if we don't have to.
No, I, I don't disagree, but it's, that's the knowledge I need. I know. Whoa.
What are you on?
Uh, just a message, all Western Pacific timber property in GMU three eight eight and three eight two. And Click Attack County is now closed to the public access permanently regardless of fire closure. Sad news to the hunters and campers, public announcements to be made soon.
Where is that, Jake?
Uh, let me see if I can.
Western Pacific Timberland?
Well, GMU.
Game units. Did that come from Fish and Wildlife or?
No, I just. Okay, three eight eight is Grayback, three eight two is East Click Attack. That's pretty much all the Simco's.
And which timber is it?
Uh, Western WPT.
WPT, wow.
But. I mean, that, that's, that's everything.
That's everything.
So. That, well, it isn't everything.
That they.
Three eighty eight, three eighty two.
Yeah, everything that they own.
Everything that they own.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They don't own anything over outside of Crown Lake at all?
Not WPT.
There you go hunters, need to hunt, good Golden Dale, there's plenty of bucks around and around.
In town, where it's illegal?
No, you just trap them, ride them out to your property.
So the range deputy will be very busy.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of knew this kind of, I think, I.
Well, we just, you know, is it funny how that you have that conversation about keeping things locked up in timberland and then they just go and lock it all up?
They go to us.
But in reality, it's again, it's private property rights. You have the right to do what you want.
You sure do.
In, in a way, I don't blame them. Because they can't enforce the rules on homeless camping and whatever, because the legislature is making all these.
Well, you can on private property.
Well, yeah, good luck with that.
On private property.
Oh, I, I think you're still pushing. I said, I don't, I don't necessarily blame them on those kind of things, but. Interesting. Wish I had a map like this that showed what property they own. What if it's in there on the other map?
Well, it wouldn't be. I mean, it pretty much is everything going like this.
Doing the whole thing and not just blocks.
Uh, there's a few in holdings with cattle ranchers. But I mean, all the way up to Grayback.
Wonder if they.
Yeah, because you can.
I wonder if they're changing their lease.
Here's the WDFW wildlife areas.
I think they're, they're grazing, right? Lease habits or they're just, so technically.
Well, that's not open to the public because you got a lease.
Well, I know, but most, most of the leaseholders should probably be okay with this because there's less people shooting around the cows.
If, minus everything is getting broken up to your cows and I can't go.
Yeah, that's a long range zoning issue. Yeah, I don't have anything else.
Such a popular place that's going to put a lot of pressure on other places.
Well, and unfortunately it already has because as you start seeing closures and well, and I would. Kind of semi argue that I don't know that it was a very popular place with hunters because you could walk around up there for four miles and never even see an old deer turd. Cause there's too many cats up there, so the cats chase the deer out. So I don't know how many hunters actually hunt in the timber ground up there. Uh, they hunt in all the private property surrounding and all the wheat fields down here in town, but. From what I'm hearing, there ain't a whole lot of animal presence up there. So. In that timber ground.
All right.
But what do I know? I don't hunt up there.
I have, what else do we have?
I have nothing else.
I mean.
Other than a. On the Thursday. So Thursday's workshop scheduled from eight to three. Is that what our agenda is? Or we just only have a morning or do you know? Okay, so I, well, that was my point is I want to make sure everybody's here for the whole day and then if we leave at noon, we leave at noon, but. If we need to be here in the afternoon, we need to be here in the afternoon. Don't make plans. Yep, yep.
The only other thing on my agenda was the WSU thing, but we just dealt with that.
Did we? I don't know that we did. I think there will be continued conversations. With WSU higher ups. To try to alleviate. Potential concerns.
Uh, I would just also like to mention that we have until October. First, I think to, according to the MOU to terminate inside MOU or to start making changes, so. Uh, that doesn't give us a whole lot of time, uh, determined based on the direction the board may wish to go.
I, I believe there is conversations being had this week. But yes. Going forward, we need to have, and I would have those MOU discussions with the. WSU management, not the WSU director.
You mean extension?
Uh, yes. So we need to enter into those discussions to change that. MOU going forward in a way that we can live with and get behind and not cause risk. In the cut.
Well, I guess. Knowing.
If you come to the mic.
Knowing that we have. To do something by October first and Jen is looking to finish up the budget. Um, on Thursday, it's kind of like the same thing. We just have at the cities where you're putting the. The ordinance before the agreement. And we saw how that worked, um, but. Whether that bridge is burned, no matter what anyways, it doesn't, I don't think it matters on this one. Um, but I think that if we, if the board. Wants to make that budget determination with the expectation that there will be some sort of. Amendment or something to that contract, it needs to.
Thursday.
We, we need to have that conversation.
And I think we'll be able to have a more qualified conversation on Thursday.
So somebody will be talking to him before that. Oh, well then, nevermind. See, I told you, I didn't want to bring it up.
You're free to talk to him too, if you have issues or concerns.
Unfortunately, I feel like. It is a contract and it is between WSU and us. And that got waylaid the other day. That's what the conversation was for and it was supposed to take place in the afternoon, but it was rearranged and we had to have it over our lunchtime. And, uh, it shouldn't have happened that way. So we're going to go back and try to have our. Conversations between the contract holders again.
Are you interested in partaking in those conversations?
Uh, no, I want to see how it goes. I mean, I, I don't think we need to make it a public meeting. We don't have time.
I think it's going to be individual commissioners at. Individual times talking to WSU. Um, not commissioners in the same room, on the same phone. Uh, kind of the scenario, but.
Well, I would, I would just. Say we, we've got to put something in the budget. We can always change the budget with a supplemental next year.
And I say, that's I said, I'm not worried about figuring whatever in the budget this year, because if we change. Decide to change pass or shift, it can always be a supplement.
And I don't know the direction you two are going, but what I'd said today is kind of the direction I feel is, is that. Um, I'm the point six FTE or point five FTE or whatever it is for office support. I would, uh. I would prefer, uh, any contract amendment personally to have. That be a WSU employee so that the management and oversight is by the person. Who actually can manage and oversee. It's, I don't see contractors managing employees in any other places. And so I just think that that's the, the proper place that it needs to be. Um, I will. Um, like you guys, let me do the negotiations with the cities and we saw, well, that's gone. I will. Put all faith and credit in you on negotiating this.
Uh, and who?
And it's going to go.
I just wanted to make sure I got out of the way before that.
That was not a Molotov cock.
And I have every best intention for that program, so I think it's going to go wonderful.
Anything? Penalty box.
Is there a camera in that corner that we don't know about? Why are you always sitting over there? Incognito. Um, that's all I have.
Okay, with that, sir, uh, having nothing else, uh, before us, uh, I would like to make a motion to.
A motion?
Motion to adjourn the regular meeting to nine AM Thursday, September seventh, twenty twenty three for scheduled budget workshops. Note that the public is welcome to attend the workshops. They are not recorded and Zoom is not available.
And I will second.
Kate, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just want to say, uh, the cup is pointing towards me for the bubble.
I bumbled earlier. Uh, hearing no discussion, all is in favor of adjourning our meeting today and, uh, reopening at nine AM Thursday for budget. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everybody on Zoom land. Again, if you have questions, comments or concerns. Email them, call us, show up and knock on your door or heck, show up at my house.
And that is Dan C.